Jump around the agenda, because I want everybody to see the appointment of a new patrolman. So, Mr. Clark, would you lead us in the...
Yes, sir.
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, we're gonna just jump around here a little bit until we have TVs up and running. Why don't we just jump right to the last thing is minutes approval. That we just got.
Yep. I move we approve the meeting minutes from May 11th, 2015.
Second.
I move the second to approve the minutes of May 11th. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
I was gonna wait till we got down to that end, because it was at the end of the deal. It seems to be stolen a little bit.
Sure.
And it was the new state road markings. Is that appropriate, bringing that up now, or you wanna wait?
Well, you, we can do, that's kind of important if you wanna wait until we get on TV.
Whatever your calls.
Okay.
Yep.
But what we can do is we can take some of the highway issues right now. Number 8A, the sidewalk plow repairs.
This is a contract for $28,998. It is being paid for largely with the proceeds of an insurance claim that we had for an accident involving a snowplow. And the patient's doing much better, so.
So, this is not from our insurance company, it's from the individuals, or?
Yeah, it's from ours.
And then they chase the individual that knocked Jimmy over?
They did not have insurance.
Oh. Hmm. So, that's up to our insurance company anyways. And you're satisfied with all the repairs? I saw that they've done some of the repairs already?
They did something to get it going. They're basically sole source in New England for that machine.
Okay.
And we wanted to make sure that we undertook the repairs now, so that the equipment is ready for when it's needed.
Why did it take the adjuster so long?
They were, well, they were really busy. They ended up saying all the adjustments, just from the severity of the winter, were crazy. The guy said he's just, he worked 11, 12 o'clock at night every night, but they were that busy. It took a while to get the pricing to from, from manufacturers, wouldn't get us a price on a cab.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? I'd look for a motion, then.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve award of a contract in the amount of $28,998.86 with Chadrick Maross Incorporated of Chelmsford, Mass. for repairs to the Highway Department's 2008 couple-plast sidewalk plow.
Second.
I move the second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you very much. Let's, we're in a roll here. Go right to Jim's backhoe.
This was one of the capital projects that was approved by town meeting last month, and we're ready to make the procurement off the state bid list.
Questions, board members?
No.
You're happy? I'm sure Chris will be happy, too. Saying we're set, make a motion.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Article 7 of the May 4, 2015 Annual Town Meeting to approve award of a contract in the amount of $136,050. Schmitting Equipment Incorporated of Oxford, Mass. for the purchase of new John Deere model, 410 Lima backhoe for the Highway Department.
Second.
I move the second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, the cameras just came on. So, folks, I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, June 8, 2015. The agenda is as follows. Organized pledge of allegiance, we've already pledged. At 6:35, times are gonna be off a little bit, because we took some other actions while we were waiting for the TVs to come up. Police chief, police officer appointments, staffing vacancy review for police dispatch supervisor. C is reserve police officer reappointments. D is cops grant application. E is procurement of police vehicles. At 6:50, fire chief, we have a fire station update and a procurement of fire engine two combination rescue pumper. 7:05, input updates, public input, then we have our member inputs. At 7:10, we have appointments. Notice from the school committee about a vacancy, filling a vacancy, jointly filling a vacancy, and annual town board appointments. Then we have my advisory board appointment. At 7:30, public hearing for all alcohol restaurant license for the application for Chu Sing, doing business as Lizakaya?
Lizakaya.
Lizakaya?
Yes.
601 Constitution Drive Ave., at the point. 7:45, common particular license, no, I'm sorry, the Littleton Common Sewer Feasibility Study Committee update. 8 o'clock was highway. We've already taken care of the sidewalk plow repairs, repair done for sidewalk plow that was damaged over the winter, and the procurement for a backhoe for the highway. Then we have a staffing vacancy review for highway laborer. And 8:10, town administrator, assistant town administrator, finance and budget, capital improvements plan quarterly update, Cooper Farm update, and the Nagog Hill Orchard lease extension. We have also already approved the minutes for our previous meeting on May 11th, 2015. Chief, if you don't mind, we have one more action to do with Mr. Clyde, and I'd like to just wrap that up. Thank you.
Staffing vacancy review.
We'll do that, and then we'll get into the mail.
Great.
All right. So, we have a staffing vacancy review for the Highway Department, and it's for a highway equipment operator and laborer.
Basically, a guy gives notice and left to pursue other things, and we have a vacancy.
Okay. Budgetarily?
It's, there'll be some slight savings, because the individual will likely come at a lower rate.
Okay.
But...
That's always good.
Okay.
Board members, questions?
Nope.
Look for a motion.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to grant the Highway Operations Manager request under the staffing vacancy review policy to fill the full-time benefited grade six position of highway equipment operator laborer.
Second.
I move the second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thanks, Jim. Okay, so moving on, Keith, mail?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of items in the mail packet. First is a flyer that has gone out from the open space and recreation plan update project. We're gonna be holding a special facilitated meeting on Wednesday, June 17th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM in this building. It's gonna be facilitated by MAPC, our regional planners, who, with some technical assistance funding that they gave us, as well as some of our own money, we have engaged to complete our open space plan. It was felt that the open space needs were pretty well met in the draft document that the committee has produced, but that we'd like to have a little more robust consideration of what our recreation needs are as well. It's a plan for both, so we're gonna have a facilitated meeting with MAPC staff. We encourage anyone who is interested in recreation needs, attend. We've got a flyer. We're doing outreach to recreation groups and hope to see folks who have input come and meet with us on Wednesday, June 17th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM.
Was this flyer actually mailed out, Keith, or?
No, it wasn't. It didn't go out, but it's gone out to all departments, to all staff. It's available online.
Okay.
So. Next is a copy of a letter, which has gone out under the signature of the chairs of this board, Community Preservation Committee, Finance Committee, along with myself, in support of getting the state government to make available more state matching funds for the Community Preservation Act. We were alerted by the Community Preservation Coalition, which represents all of the hundred, nearly a couple hundred towns and cities that have adopted the CPA, that there's an important legislative hearing that will be, that will take place tomorrow morning on Beacon Hill, and they were encouraging communities that have adopted the CPA to go on record as being in favor of this bill that would provide additional funding. Our legislators, both Senator Eldridge and Representative Arcera, are cosponsors of the bill anyway, that there are quite a number of members of the legislature, or 20 senators and 68 representatives that also cosponsor it. So, we didn't want to miss the opportunity to be on the record as needing additional state matching funds, considering how much work we've been doing to, through the blended CPA, to maximize our, maximize state matching funds when we can. So, that's what I've got in the mail packet.
Members' comments?
I might know if we could use this for a future agenda item, and not specific to the subject of this particular letter or the legislation, but the legislation itself is a revenue bill that's making its way through the House and the Senate, and there's probably others of equal importance. And when they fall into the short term, such as this, and before, the board has an opportunity to meet, where we're asking the town to take a position on advocacy of legislation, is maybe a conversation on how we handle that going forward. So, if there's no critique on this, it just presents an opportunity to make it topical. If we can make that a future agenda item, please.
Sure.
Yeah, I think we, in two weeks from tonight, we're adopting, we're reviewing the board's policies and regulations, and I will add that to the list of topics that we can discuss.
Thank you.
Okay?
Anything else? All right.
Just relative to the first mail piece that Mr. Bergman mentioned with the recreation needs, I just, I'd like to bring this board to the school committee, have them present it on Thursday to their, to their listening public, and also maybe they can do a distribution.
Oh, that would be great. Yeah, we had included Mike Lynn in our little working group that had put together the strategy of how we're gonna go forward here, so that, so that would be great, to get the information out.
You can get that sent to me electronic, but I can...
You bet.
Take care of that.
Very good. Anything else? All right, chief, you're up. Next agenda item is police chief, a patrol officer appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, we had a opening in the patrol force with the departure of Tom Fien going to Lowell, which we came before the board, got permission to fill that position. Derek Camello's been with us now for about two years as a reserve, holds a master's degree in business administration from Pittsburgh State, Bachelor of the Science in Criminal Justice from Manat Maria. He will have to go to the full academy, he's only been to the partial academy, so he's signed up for that starting in August. And Derek has done quite well with us over the two years he's been here. He's participated in many of the different community programs, you know, even though he doesn't work for us full-time, he's assisted in, whether it be student academy, whether it be the open house, everything else, he's made himself an integral part of the department. So, I guess with that, I'll introduce Derek, and let you guys grill him first. Ladies.
I have one question for you, chief. I believe I read in your submittal that he was cruiser certified?
Yes, he is. He is cruiser certified.
So, can you just, what does that mean?
Basically, what happened is, is he went through our cruiser training program, so that he's available to take cruiser shifts if they open up on an overtime basis, or if we need extra personnel. He's certified now to be able to work for us on that basis, not just doing, you know, the paid details or the parades, things like that. He can actually go out and work the street.
So, as we hire him as a patrolman, he'll be able to get in a cruiser and?
Correct, until August, when the academy starts. And then, when he comes out of the academy, it'll be a minimal FTO program, because he's already cruiser certified.
Gotcha. All right. Members, questions? Selectman Hebert?
No questions. I like the variety of certifications, or kind of range of certifications that you've got, even speaking of vehicles, motorcycle, suicide prevention, sexual assault, and best of the year, I think that's some good skills to have, so, thank you.
Mr. Ravel?
Yes. Hi, Derek.
Hi.
What do you believe a police officer's most important concern should be?
The public, the safety of the public, being able to relate and being able to, I think, sympathize with people and where they're coming from. Not everybody's having the best day, and you're gonna probably meet people on their worst day, and being able to be compassionate, sympathetic, but yet, you know, firm.
Thank you.
Like I go with, Selectman Hebert said, as far as your certifications, the one thing that stood out to me is that it was a good breath. I appreciate that. Having seen you around, I think your resume, trust the chief. Should be your profile.
Thank you.
So, Derek, I know we met the last time you came, as I remember. So, having worked in town, what's your experience has been, as far as public, as far as working, and really the traffic?
Good interaction with the public, I mean, it's, the admonishes I had taken are kind of, kind of minimal to the most part, relating to the FTO, but good interactions with people, nice town, small town, similar to where I grew up. It's where I live, I live in Lunenburg, so it's similar size, so, you know, it's a good town feel.
Great, great. Any other further questions from the board? I'd look for a motion.
The Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Reserve Officer Derek E. Camello of Lunenburg, Mass. to the position of patrolman with the Littleton Police Department, subject to successful conclusion of medical testing.
Second.
I move the second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Excellent answer. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you. Can you tell me what's?
I'll talk to you tomorrow. Okay.
All right, moving on. Staffing vacancy review for the police department, police dispatch communications supervisor. Chief?
The communications supervisor's position's been open for approximately since 2013, went through a large change in either personnel change, or Tim Beemish retired, a large personnel change in the control center. So, we kind of held that position at abeyance. What I did is, I farmed it up to a sergeant for the time being. Under the 204A contract, the dispatch supervisor's supposed to come from within the ranks of the, of the dispatch, of the, you know, communications personnel. We held off on that, because we brought in a lot of new personnel, wanted to see who, you know, if several of them could handle the new, you know, so each person was doing parts, and some people excelled, some people didn't, some people just wanted nothing to do with it, and just wanted to do the communications job. So, we've got a couple internal candidates now that would be good fits for the job, so I did carry it forward in the 2016 budget, which was approved in town meeting, so I'm asking to be able to advertise that position internally, does not increase the amount of the communications personnel, still would stay at five. All it is, is simply a promotion for one of the communications officers to become supervisor, still works the desk, so.
More than likely a vacancy you've come before us to fill behind, too?
No, no vacancies created by doing this.
Oh.
Because there's only the five that work there.
Okay.
Currently, right now, there's just no supervisor in that five, so there'll be the supervisor in four, which is still what we need to run the control center.
Gotcha.
So, no, there's no vacancy coming behind this.
Gotcha. Questions, board members?
No.
As you stated, budget was all set, so I'd look for a motion.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the police chief's request under the staffing vacancy review policy to fill one full-time benefited position, a police dispatch communications supervisor, by internal promotion with no increase in the resulting staffing level.
Second.
I move the second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you very much. Congratulations. All right, the next item is reserve police officer reappointments. Eight reserve police officers in town. Chief?
I'm requesting that the Board approve the appointment of the list of reserve officers. They're currently, they are currently all reserve officers in the community. They maintain their certifications and have worked for us, some of them for going on 25, 30 years. And I'm asking for a term of three years for their appointment, which is, I guess, is...
That's the maximum allowed under the statute. We used to have, we used to have the routine practice up until, I don't know, I guess when I got here, that you would reappoint the entire police department every year, and you really don't need to do that, especially the union members who have, you know, permanent positions. The state law was only clarified in the last year or so, though, to say that the permanent positions, you know, you don't need to reappoint those, they're subject to a collective bargaining agreement. However, the reserve officers are still subject to a term limit, so we can go, or, not a term limit, but to have a term, a finite term, so you can reappoint them up to a period of three years, which is what we're proposing to do with the list, and then we'll just come back every three years with the chief's list.
If the board's will is shorter, I have no problem with that either. Again, you know, we just went with the maximum amount of time allowable.
Any issues with this, board members?
No. Because you have redress, if it was necessary. You have redress, if necessary.
The reserve officers are employees that will, they're bylaw employees that will. So, I mean, certainly, if we had to remove someone...
No problem. Okay, I'd look for a motion.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass. General Chapter 41, Subsection 97A, to reappoint the following reserve police officers for terms of three years beginning July 1st, 2015, and expiring June 30th, 2018. John M. Murphy, Robert F. Saborn, Gordon M. Clark, Richard E. Landers, John Justolares, Heather Rhodes, Matthew O'Sullivan, and Paul Corrigan.
Second.
I move the second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you very much. Congratulations on that one, though. All right, next item is cops hiring grant application. Chief?
On beginning of May, we were notified that the cops' past hiring grant was coming out. It has a quick turnaround. It's, they put it out May 15th, and it has to be back in June 18th. It's a 30-day turnaround. I'm not proposing this just because the grant is out there. As you know, we just got our 17th officer back last September. The board put us back to the strength we were in 2004. We haven't actually grown an officer since 2004, while obviously, the community around us has grown, and, you know, communities that surround us also have grown. We, you know, we have an extreme, extremely high transient traffic through our community, but this grant, what I'm concentrating on is, as you know, as I've told you in the past, our detective bureau was getting overstressed with the shared detective SRO, and having the, just one full-time detective and a part-time, literally, SRO detective, because the schools really require a full-time person in there. So, this grant would allow us to hire the 18th officer, which would put the full-time person within the schools, is my proposal, which also allows me then to make sure that the detective bureau keeps its two full-time officers, and also allows patrol to actually have an extra person, because of the way it staggers down on an overlapping, would hopefully be an overlapping shift, to start alleviating that problem on 3-11s. You know, while the SRO is very important, my main part of this whole thing is to start to increase the coverage within the community. As I said to you in the letter, with 15 great road filling up with the demands that are gonna come on us from the point, we're going from having five liquor-serving establishments to 11 liquor-serving establishments of some kind or another. You know, we can already see the amount of people that go into the point just with Starbucks and Market Basket and Vitamin Shop open. Again, I'm not saying that they're all criminals by any means, but it does unfortunately bring the element that also, you know, breaks into vehicles, and it does, you know, bring in some people who, you know, it's just a fact of life.
It's that strong coffee.
It's that strong coffee, right. And, you know, I've talked to different chiefs who, you know, said, you know, I've talked to Andover, other chiefs who have malls like ours right off the highway, and it, you know, it lends itself to quick hits and, you know, get out of town. So, I want to be ahead of the curve, I don't want to be behind the curve. So, this 18th officer, obviously, it's $125,000 over three years. It does not by any means pay the full, you know, you saw the full breakdown of what a person, what a person costs. I'm hoping that the board sees the wisdom in what I'm trying to do, and, you know, realizes that if we can get some money to do this, this would be great. I envision coming back to you in the fall with the, from what I've seen so far on the strategic plan, and looking for another officer, and plus, rather than, you know, my original plan was to go for the 18th, and then come back in the fall, looking at what I see now for 19th and 20th officer, to get an overlapping night shift on. But my proposal probably would change, and thinking it out, is to propose the 19th officer and increase overtime, and I realize I'm getting ahead of myself, but I can, I really need to try and keep that three cars on, on nights and days. The two-car days for this community are, in my opinion, you know, I'm not gonna say unsafe, but I lose sleep over, over the amount of cars some nights that are on the road. You saw from the, you know, the four-year fact sheet, basically, it costs, I'll open the first year, about $36,000, second year's $39,000, $42,000 year three. Year four, we have to pick up the entire tab of the officer, which is $87,000. And then, a four-year total of all monies that Littleton would have to expend is $206,356.45. I realize it's real money, and I'm not sure if we, I'm not sure if we have it, but the other thing I would ask tonight is allow us to apply. We can refuse the grant. It won't be, it won't be announced until September, if, you know, if there are questions that we have to work through, because we've only got, this was the last plausible moment before, because it's due before your next meeting.
Okay. I guess I'll start. My concern is the FY '16 budget, it said FY '15, but I think it meant FY '16, right? Maybe it's calendar year '15. But the '16 budget's set, if you are awarded it, are you able, and we said level staffing for fiscal year '16, are you able to do remainder of the year without asking for increases?
I can pick up the base, I can pick up the base salary, yes, no problem. The problematic part is, is not the salary part, I'm okay there. It's the other $36,000 where, and benefits. That's where the problem lies, because that's not something that's budgeted for in any way, shape, or form in my budget, is benefits, so.
So, I guess that's my main concern. I mean, we went through the budget process for level staffing. I'm not opposed to asking for the money, I just don't know whether or not that we can afford, you know, another quarter million dollars for an officer over four years, until we start fiscal year '17 budget. We're not gonna know exactly what we're dealing with at this point, so those are my concerns. And if in fact that we do award it, and get awarded it, and we hire this individual, the town says, okay, $217,000 we can afford for four years, what happens after that? You know, the $83,000 or $89,000 going forward, how's that impact the entire budget? So, those are my concerns.
That's why I think we, you know, I laid out the, you know, Mr. Bergman's urging and everyone else's, we laid out the entire cost of an employee, which, you know, is good for everyone to see, because there's a lot you don't see.
Yeah, that's a big impact. Board members, questions?
Just a couple. I like the creative problem solving. I think that's good, coming with the solution, rather than just the problem. I certainly, you know, support the SRO, and actually, I was telling Pablo, who's here, at the graduation, high school graduation this past Friday, he was mentioned at least three times in three different speeches, so he's, you know, clearly making a good impact there. That being said, I had the same question about cost, and if we don't get this grant, let's say we apply for it and don't get it, what is the consequence?
I mean, there's no consequence, although, instead of asking for, for one, I'll be back asking for two in overtime, you know, but that'll be in the budget process in the fall. You know, again, a lot of this relegates to, you know, since 2004, we were at, see, in '16, during the layoffs, we were in '17 before the layoffs, we've gone through it, you know, again, we're continuing to grow, the type of, the type of activity we handle is also not the same, and the way we do things is not the same, certainly. As you know, policing now is not just, you know, when I came on, policing was all about, you went to, you went to a call, and you handled it somehow, and then you walked away from it. Well, that hopefully isn't the way, you know, necessarily, all the calls are handled today, or, you know, we're into problem solving, we're into not going back to reoccurring calls if we can, you know, and the type of paperwork and other things that are required in this day and age are completely different. So, the need for officers is there, and I also read, you know, I'm not, I've been involved in the budget process long enough, I understand that people are expensive.
If you get the grant, how long do you have to decline or accept it?
We would, you know, basically, my thing was, if you allow me to apply for it, we'd work through whether we have the... we'd work through whether we have the money or not, and then we only have a finite window of time after the, they say, we have to know probably within a week.
But if the grant decision is coming out in September, for example, then, then if you take a vote tonight to allow the application to go in, then we have between now and September to decide if we are able to accept it even if it's granted.
Right.
Or you can decide not to have the grant go in.
What I'd like to see is just that. Decide to apply for it, figure out the math, try to figure out if, if we don't move forward, what is the impact going to be with overtime? You know, the potential impact for not having another body on the street. I just, I think that's what I would like to see. And I don't see any reason why we would hold up applying for the grant. It's not easy to process a grant, so if you're willing to put the resources into...
It's actually all, it's actually all written, right?
So, that's kind of where I'm at. I would like to do exactly what you said, and authorize the application to go in, and then kind of do the math and figure out the impact.
Got you. Mr. Vellum?
When I began reading the package, I was getting ready to do a whole bunch of math. You did it for me, so thanks a bunch. You did it for all of us. So, you know, open and transparent is used somewhat very flippantly, but Bonnie and Matt, thanks very much for putting this together. It helps a lot. I do requirements-based resourcing, if you will. So, we've been talking a little of the monies there. That's the second part of it. You have talked anecdotally, at the very least, about the requirement for another police officer on the streets of Littleton. Certainly, I'd like to see a bit more quantitative data that's related to that. As you mentioned, some of your police chief colleagues in towns that have malls near the city, or excuse me, near the highway, experienced some things. I'd like to be able to see, you know, if you could produce some of the math on that, so that we can say, indeed, the requirement exists for the town of Littleton going forward next year. We need another policeman. If we quantifiably say that, that's how we start to put into the priorities as to what's in the budget, what's available, and how do we balance against other priorities we have in town, versus just whether or not we could, you know, be able to afford two-hundred thousand dollars over the next four years. While important, that part's irrelevant until we're sure that the requirement exists. So, that's all I'd ask. So, certainly, support going forward with the grant application, and just as everybody else has stated so far, is that we do that sort of analysis and then make a decision as a town.
Right. Any other comments?
No, sir.
I would look for a motion.
Moved that the board has selected vote to authorize submission of an application to the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services under FY two thousand fifteen cops hiring program for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a three-year grant for up to seventy-five percent of the cost of salary and benefits for one additional patrolman to be assigned as school resource officer.
Second.
They're moving in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. All right, chief, next item is procurement of police vehicles.
For cars at annual town meeting, the town meeting approved the purchase of two marked and one unmarked cars. These are the, the spreadsheets on them. They were all procured through state bid, and through the state bid program, and I would ask for your authorization to, to make the purchase. Some equipment is not included in these sheets because they're ordered from different places, but this basically gets the, the patrol cars come here pretty much fully equipped. The detective's car has to have some other equipment from the outside put in.
You got enough money in the budget for that needs, or is it going to come out of your operations? It still had some left over? Okay, that's the only question I had. Board members, any issues? Look for a motion.
Moved that the board has selected vote pursuant to Article seven of the May fifth, no, May fourth, two thousand fifteen annual town meeting to authorize procurement from MHQ Municipal Vehicles Marlboro Mass. under Plymouth County Commissioners Contract Number twelve thirteen fourteen of two marked and equipped two thousand fifteen Ford utility police interceptor vehicles totaling ninety-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars and one unmarked equipped two thousand fourteen Ford utility police interceptor vehicle at a purchase price of thirty-two thousand dollars one hundred and forty-nine dollars eighty-one thousand.
Second.
I moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, chief.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Chief, before you run off, I am going to have a question.
Can't get up that easy, chief?
God, man.
Actually, I have a request. We did a lot of information and some decisions in the police department this evening, and in general, I'd like to see if we could use this impetus in the dovetailing with the cops' grant application to just have a discussion, an open discussion about policing in the town, and what policing means to the community, and what the community means to the police also. You heard my question of Derek earlier, is the most important aspect of being a police officer in the town. And it gets to, what I believe at least, is what do we expect of you and your force as a town? And then, similarly, what do you expect of us as a town? Two-way street, certainly, police enforcement, law enforcement is very topical now in our country, and that helps certainly bring it to the forefront now. But I'd like to say that I believe that you and the force do an excellent job here in our town. I'm very pleased with that. So, this is not seen as a critique. I see it as an opportunity to advertise even more, but more importantly, also for the town to come forward and say, this is what we'd like from our police department. Because, you know, you talk about serve and protect, and certainly, it's the folks in town that you're serving and protecting. So, I'd ask that in a future agenda item. We have, and I'm not asking for an open hearing or public hearing unless you think that'd make more sense, but certainly, an open discussion at the very least.
Sure. I think, going to chief...
Because also, there'll be a survey coming out within the next month also to all town, all the people in town to do with the strategic plan also. So, maybe after that, that would be a time to dovetail, because we'll have some, some data responses back on how the townspeople feel we're doing, you know, and what differences, you know, it would give us a wide range that may not show but a meeting here to also discuss with the people that show here. So, and that's something we can do even before the report is necessarily issued.
Why don't you, when you have all that completed, get it up to Keith, and Keith just let us know, and we'll get it on the agenda, so we can kind of dovetail, as PJ said, the whole, your strategic plan intent.
Yeah, hoping that when the board adopts goals for the coming year, which you'll begin to do at your next meeting, that you had a, a goal this, this past year for police and fire strategic plans. We're, we're in process. There's still some important work to be done. We're about to hear from the fire chief about his, about his efforts. But if, if those goals continue, then I think that we'll be addressing, we're planning on addressing those issues in any event.
Sounds good.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right, we have the fire chief. Come on up, chief. Our next agenda item is fire station update, design plan, site-related issues. I saw you, chief.
So, basically, tonight, we're going to do just a simple review for the newest member of the board, and we'll do a...
That one's forward, that one's backward, I think.
We're just going to do a recap from, from the start of my time as chief, and moving forward with, I do the fire station, or at least the feasibility portion. Back in February twenty thirteen, we started, we put in for our feasibility request to evaluate the station and the entire property. That was completed in May twenty-second. It basically documented all of the facility and the inadequacies of it, and what it was going to need for staffing. All right, there we go. Few things that you can see through the pictures are with the ambulances, our lack of space. Today's code, you're required to have about twelve feet in between everything. We have about three. And so, it's a little bit snug when members are getting dressed, trying to get out of the station, and vehicles are pulling out and getting bumped by mirrors. One of the other things that we had is some deterioration in the rear station, and we had just recently repaired the roof on that with some old rubber roofing. So, that should get us through to, we get to the point of facility needs. Also, we transitioned into the twenty-four-hour staffing, and with the car facility, we didn't have space to put the staffing, so we were able to put a trailer into the back of the building. As I just said, the, the rear garage had some roof issues, and we did replace that just in the past fall. And we had, the trailer is in there, a little bit cold, but it works, you know. We not only replaced quarters for the twenty-four-hour staff, but we're able to also incorporate four additional workstations in there, just for the lack of office space that we currently had. And over the years, over, so twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, we got the neighbors involved. We had several open houses. We took all of their recommendations, their concerns, and we were able to put them in and start to come up with various designs, while still maintaining our functional needs. And, you know, we came up with several renditions, which you'll see, you'll see the latest rendition as we get further. But later in twenty, in twenty thirteen, the neighbors were, hey, how about getting out of here? Can you find a new site? And so, we did our due diligence. We evaluated, I believe it was over twenty-eight sites, met the qualifications of two acres of orchard, of which I think twenty-four of them were swamped. So, it just, there were two that met the goals, and that was the orchard and the Morgan property. Morgan property rose to the top just because of what it is, the field. But unfortunately, it was a little bit over a million dollars just to gain access to the property, just to, to build the infrastructure to get up there, the road, the utilities, and everything like that. So, on December second of twenty thirteen, the board voted to mix that idea and voted that we can remain at our current site at Twenty Four Street. So, here's some of the latest rendition, which incorporated several of the features and thoughts of the neighbors to try to make it, make it blend with the neighborhood, a little bit of the architecture and just the roof styles. It would more than double our space that we have now. That would just bring us, like I said, up to today's code. It's going to bring us looking into the future. It has the second floor, it's basically living quarters, allows us the white portion, the meeting space, community meeting space, a nice first-floor meeting room that would be open several nights of the week to different organizations if need be. And then, as far as storage in the rear of the building, you can see, there's a small carport in the back where we can put some of our trailers in underneath. You know, currently, that's something that's outside all the time. We have several pieces that are outside that are exposed to the weather that, you know, we, they have weather-related issues that come with that. This is the best use of the, the entire site. We basically expand the station where the garage bays would go towards Fay Park. On the back side is the carport. We would level the rear garage that we're currently using, as well as the old police station. Those would both come down. We would more than double the parking spaces. What we currently have on the side of the building, there's twenty, and we'd be bumping that up to about thirty-seven in the back. A little bit more of a walk, but it definitely adds to the best use of the property. And we also add a little bit more green space than what we have right now.
The thirty-seven is for the public use of Fay Park and...
Yep, absolutely. Fay Park, the church, trails, parking space for our membership during training nights, coming back to calls during the day, and the responses. These, I know, a little bit small, but these are the floor plans. On the first floor, it adds several offices. We keep part of the old garage right now for some of the utility vehicles in the front, so we kind of keep the character of the existing station. It guts the existing station and rehabs that, as well as adding, you know, some more functional space. Second floor is all living space, living quarters. We don't, we wouldn't need an elevator on us because the second floor isn't accessible to the public.
You got a pole, Doran?
Yes. The basic breakdown from the cost estimator, when we initially did this, is you can, you can run down all of the site costs for the engineering. It's basically a steel building, brick veneer, a brick shell. There's the design costs, and then it breaks down everything even, even further with treatments and whatnot. The bottom line originally is six-point-six. We didn't bring any updated numbers because of the economy. Yes, right now, the economy's, you know, booming a little bit more. The price will most likely increase. We're still two years out from the final cost, so depending on the economy, it could rise or fall. But it's, I think as it gets closer, we'll be able to nail the cost down a little bit more. So, basically, we can go over the timeline. Back in May of twenty sixteen, they, the board made the vote to basically establish the guideline, the timeline here. Sorry, in twenty, January of twenty fourteen, they voted to establish the timeline. But May, May of, May of twenty sixteen, vote for the six-hundred thousand for borrowing of design. July of twenty sixteen through October of twenty sixteen, the design work would be completed with the plans. And then, November of sixteen through February of seventeen, the, all the bid documents would be prepared and sent out. Bids would be due in March of twenty seventeen, and then at spring of twenty seventeen at the annual town meeting, we would go for construction costs. Construction would then begin in twenty seventeen and hopefully be done in eighteen. And then, the debt service.
And then we pay for it by twenty twenty.
Yeah. Nineteen and twenty.
All right. Well, chief, we appreciate, I appreciate that, you know, keeping this on the front burner, so to speak, to, to come back in and give us an update. We all understand that, you know, it's a, it's a long process to get construction. I think that the finance team and working numbers and having the high school, I believe, come off the debt rolls.
That's when Shaker and the high school.
Yeah, so, when those debt rolls, you know, the nice part is we'll be able to present this at a May town meeting without going up in taxes.
Yep, and that's the best part about it. It should be very minimal, if any, cost of a tax pay.
Right, well, it's still going to cost a tax pay, it's not an increase of our property taxes.
Characterization.
Yeah, yeah. Board members, questions, comments?
No, great update, thank you.
I think that, I mean, even instituting like a ten percent increase, you're right at that seven million dollar level, so it's, that's what it looks like you and Bonnie have put together as the, the debt service, estimated debt service, and I appreciate that versus six-point-six now, and that's not what I'm going to go forward with. That was a good update, appreciate it. Thanks. And I actually just want to thank you for, chief, taking a tour and kind of showing me firsthand, and I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
When we began this late iteration, what, two and a half years ago now?
Yeah.
The point was on the horizon, the forty-b was on the horizon. They're coming to fulfillment now, and as we're seeing other things, we recently redid our housing plan for the town. We had MAPC help us with projections going on to the future of increase in structures in the town, and then also population. So, the building now is envisioned. How far into the future do you see that building serving us?
I would say at least forty to fifty years, anyway. It's not necessarily the facility that we need for the vehicles, it's the staffing that we need to operate what we have. When you compare around to other towns that do, you know, double or even triple of what we have, these, this is the size of a facility that they're utilizing, that this would have space to occupy six around the clock. That would be, you know, something that is definitely, like definitely in our future. I think we can comfortably say forty to fifty years of that, I feel.
Thanks.
It's good future planning. All right, so, thanks, chief, we appreciate it. Our next item is procurement of fire engine two combination rescue pumper. Chief?
So, looking for procurement this evening through Smeeel Fire Apparatus of Snider, Nebraska. Looking for a twenty sixteen Smeeel rescue pump. This would be purchased through the NJPA for a sum of five-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty dollars. It does meet all the state's bid respects and requirements. And this was approved at town meeting.
So, this is actually off of the state contract? You were able to get the apparatus right up there? That's making procurement a lot easier?
Absolutely.
Questions, board members?
No.
Look for a motion.
Moved that the board has selected vote pursuant to Article seven of the May fourth town, two thousand fifteen annual town meeting to authorize procurement of a combination rescue pumper vehicle for five-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty dollars from Smeeel Fire Apparatus of Snider, Nebraska, under the National Joint Powers Alliance NJPA contract.
Second.
Moving in second, and all those in favor? It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Good luck, chief.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update. All right, our next agenda item is school committee vacancy. Proceed to fill vacancy until May 2016 Annual Town Election. I see Mr. Chairman. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. I'm going to hold off on that. I was just advised by the vice chair. We have, running a little late here, 7:05 is public input. Does anybody have any public input? Yes, sir. Stand and state your name.
A point, water, a question. I will not have any questions until I hear the presentation about the school committees filling the vacancy. Will I be allowed to ask a question then?
Yeah, it's more of a procedural issue, but yeah, not a problem, not a problem. Any other public input? Okay, member input, Sergeant Hebert.
Just a couple of things, and I bet there's going to be a common theme on this one. So last Friday was a great day in Littleton. We had two groundbreaking ceremonies, which our chair gave speeches at both. Nikki Sangus was here for one of them, so that was really exciting. We welcomed the Marriott to Littleton, as well as Hope Re Group. And then congratulations to the LHS senior high school class for their graduation. They seem like a really talented group of folks, and I can't wait to see what they go do in the world of things. And Chuck, by the way, your speech was great as well.
Thank you. Mr. DeCoste, any comments?
I would follow that. No, I just, I'll echo the well wishes to the graduates. They worked hard, and for all the folks from the town, I'll echo what I said in my speech. And thank you for all the investment that everyone's made in the youth of Littleton.
Okay, Mr. Vella?
Sure, congratulations to the LHS high school graduates. It was an excellent ceremony. The whole school department did a super job in putting it on. Kids did a great job, and they were very, very proud and stood tall upon receiving their diplomas. Want to second what has been said about Chuck's speech, it was an excellent speech, very motivational, and just give it that one extra degree, was very well done. Appreciate that, and I think the kids did too. At least one of them will remember 50 years from now.
Yes.
But most people forget 50 seconds afterwards, so well done. But I certainly want to give a little emphasis also to the staff at the high school, because what they did to make that all happen was just a wonderful event for the town that evening. I'd like to say one other thing, and it's about the Master Plan Update Steering Committee. We'll be meeting in this room tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. So it's 9:00 June tomorrow, and again, it's the Master Plan Update Steering Committee, and we have space for one more person. We have 11 on the committee at this point. Remember, it's going to be the town's plan, not the committee's plan, so please, town input. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vella. I have an email here from Paul Vella, but his other hat as a votarian, asking the 300th, Board of Selectmen, the 300th Committee, 300th Legacy Committee, and the Littleton Common Committee to participate in the dedication of the clock that the Rotary Club had donated downtown. So I'm going to poll the board. He had asked that we poll the board members, anybody going? I know I'll be there.
I forgot what day that is.
That would be July 16th.
Thursday, July 1st.
Yep. July 16th.
July 16th.
Yeah. In combination with the third Thursday events, is what we'd like to do.
Sure.
I will be there.
I'll be there also.
I've got a spot. I'll be there.
So polled.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I have one request, too. We got an email from Evelyn Duran on 25 Nastis Road about a piece of property, town-owned. It doesn't fall into the requirements for our
It's too large.
Yeah, it's too large. What I'd like to see is put it out to bid. The town can always reject any bids that are just not awarded, so we like to, she's trying to do a septic system, we all know how that is in town, so if we can get that out, that'd be appreciated. My last thing was, I attended at 6:00, the Castle and the Trees Design Committee were out there and looking at doing a walkthrough with the design company. It was interesting to hear some of their developments and some of their suggestions. They're going to be at Chick Lane School for Input tomorrow. There is also a golf tournament coming up, so we're hoping, keep our fingers crossed that the budget gets through and the state kicks in some cash for Castle and the Trees. You can go to castleandthe trees.org to find out about their golf tournament, so I hope everybody shows up there and have a good turnout for this great cause. All right there, Mr. Chairman, we have a school vacancy. Mr. DeCoste finally resigned from the school committee. And procedurally, are we the notice here? Please know that at its meeting on June 8th, the Board of Selectmen, oh, no, well, we're not voted yet, so is this for the public hearing?
Well, we've received notice, yeah, we have a proposed notice that the board would place inviting applications.
Okay.
If we've received the statutory notice from the school committee to say that there is a vacancy, and that by the school committee so informing the selectmen, their board gets to participate in jointly filling the vacancy.
Oh, okay. I was reading the wrong one. Board of Selectmen and the remaining members of the school committee will meet jointly on Monday, July 13th at 7:00 PM in Room 103, Littleton Town Office 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass, to vote pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 41, Subsection 11, to fill a vacancy of the school committee through the May 2016 Annual Town Election. Qualified registered voters of the town of Littleton are invited to apply for this appointment. Applicants will be interviewed at a July 13, 2015 joint meeting. Town board application forms are available in the office of the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, Town of Littleton, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass. Completed forms should be returned to that office by not later than noon Friday, July 10th, 2015, and applicants should attend the joint meeting for interview. James F. Carr, Chairman, Board of Selectmen. So we have a vacancy, you guys are all set?
Yes, we do have a vacancy, we have the resignation. That process that you just read out is fine with us, and the dates that we're talking about, kind of this as well.
Okay. Another question? Oh, yes.
I just want to be clear, what the procedure is, an announcement will be made, and requests will be made for application for this position?
Yep, the public notice that I just wrote, I mean read, I didn't rewrite it. It's Mr. Bergman wrote it.
Yeah, and we'll be publishing that in the newspaper, so it's the board's practice to, when there's a position to be filled by appointment, that we advertise that we have the period of at least four weeks open during which applications can be submitted. And in this case, we, the intent would be for the two boards to jointly interview whoever applies, and then make the appointment on July 13th. The person would fill, would serve in that position only until the next annual town election, which is next May. I don't remember if there was any time on here.
It is the, it is the
It's just that one year. That seat would be up again.
So it'd be just that one year, so it'd be a three-year term.
Right.
That would be filled at the election next night.
Okay, so am I to understand that the interviews and the election will occur on Monday, July 13?
The interview and appointment will be on July 13th.
And that'll be 6:00, 7:00?
7:00, 7:00 PM.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, board members? I'd look for a motion. Are you resigned?
Moved at the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 41, Subsection 11, to receive the notice thereunder given by the remaining members of the school committee, the vacancies on said board created by the resignation of Richard Charles DeCoste, back to June 6, 2015. And further to give notice to said remaining members that the Board of Selectmen shall convene a joint meeting with the intent to fill said vacancy through the May 2016 Annual Town Election by joint appointment to be made on Monday, July 13th, 2015, at 7:00 PM. And further, to invite qualified registered voters of the town of Littleton to apply for said appointment and to be interviewed at said joint meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. See you on the 13th.
See you in July.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. No summer break, eh?
I miss you guys.
We should open and table the public hearing at 7:30, so that we can interview the
Yes.
Interview the town board members there here.
All right, so we have a public hearing for 7:30 that we're going to open and table, because we have some town appointments.
We will be, we will be with the applicant momentarily, though, should take about 15 minutes.
All right, so the public, here's a legal notice. The Littleton Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, June 8th, 2015, at 7:30 PM, in the Littleton Town Office, Room 10337, Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass, 01460, to act on all alcoholic restaurant license application under Mass General Law Chapter 138, Subsection 12, submitted by Chung Sing Inc. doing business as Leskaya and Dugu O as listed manager at the property located at 495 Great Road, AKA 601 Constitution Ave., Littleton, Mass, and known as The Point. A mixed-use development comprising of seven lots, approximately 90.27 acres of land shown in parcels, 1-1, 1-2, 1-3, 1-4, 1-5, and 6, and 7. On assessment map R18, the applicant is seeking approval for the sale of all alcoholic beverages Monday through Sunday, 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM, at the premises described below. Approximately 6,271 square feet of restaurant space in a building now existing or hereafter constructed at 495 Great Road, AKA 601 Constitution Avenue, Littleton. Comments thereon may be submitted in writing to the Selectmen Town Administrator's Office, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass, 01460, by noon Friday, June 5th, 2015, or in person at the hearing. Littleton Board of Selectmen, James Carr, Chairman. I'd look for a motion to open the session.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye. I'd look a motion to table it.
But just let it go, the applicants are here. If we could just go through it.
Shouldn't they?
Rather than have them wait, because the appointment process may well take some time.
So, do you want to move forward? I'm okay with that, too. All right, so, public hearing. Applicants, please come forward.
God, I'm just so
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Chris Coleman. I'm here on behalf of the applicants. I have Singh Cheng here with me. He is the majority owner, 45% shareholder. And Digu O is going to be the proposed manager. You're familiar with the location, it's The Point. It was just down there, construction's coming along. They anticipate being ready September, hopefully, September, October, in that area. It could take a month. Like you said, the space is approximately 6,200 square feet. Asian cuisine, there is hibachi-style dining there, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, but it's cooking tables, you know, meat, poultry, seafood cooked right in front of you, vegetables. It's a communist family dining atmosphere, but you kind of sit around the table, and it's, it's nice if you haven't done it before. 180 seats are proposed, 94 in the main dining room. In the hibachi area, it'll be 64 seats. There is a lounge bar, 16 seats there, and there'll also be a sushi bar for those who like sushi, six seats available there. Proposed hours of operation, seven days a week, are 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM. There is a patio along with it, but they're not going to keep that open till that period of time. 11:00 o'clock, everybody's off, area's locked up. Proposed manager is Mr. O. He has a good restaurant experience from 2005 to 2010. He was a waiter with Tokyo Restaurant in Nashua, they have a quality license, and he was a liquor server there. In 2010 and 2012, he was also a waiter at the Feng Shui Restaurant in Chelmsford, same capacity, good experience. He's a US citizen, had his tips training, be there 40, 60 hours a week, he's going to be there a lot. When he's not there, Mr. Singh here, or Singh has excellent restaurant experience as well, he's going to be there also assistant. We talked about, I know you can't really emphasize this enough, but the alcohol training for all the staff. There'll be onsite trainers that come in, there'll be about 10 to 15 people that are going to be employed, the chefs, probably not as necessary, but all the weight staff, bartenders, everybody there will have extensive alcohol training. But behalf of answering any questions, if I have.
Board members?
Open till 1:00 AM. I think we, do we have one other, do we have another place open that late? Do we have anything else open till 1:00 AM? Chipshots is open.
Chipshots is open. The license at the Pub and the Common is allowable for 1:00 AM. They choose not to. Not at all.
And this is one of the licenses we already have reserved, right?
Correct.
This is a good overview.
Right. Mr. DeCoste?
No, it was a pretty comprehensive package, and there were no issues from the regulatory or the public safety staff.
Right.
They were all okay with it.
Mr. Cheng?
How you doing?
Good. Pleasure to meet you, sir.
Nice to meet you.
Why Littleton?
Why Littleton? Because everyone else is always at your way, and so that's why we pick Littleton, since it's a small town, though, and then we can be able to serve the community, they will be there for us.
Thank you.
So I have, is this your first restaurant, or do you own others?
Oh, no, we own several restaurants.
Several restaurants, so you, as your representative said, tips, training, and all that is very important. It's very important to us in this town as far as public safety. Chief and his staff do a good job making sure that that's all complied with. So, you know, it sounds like a big restaurant, you know? It sounds like 160 seats, is it?
180.
180 seats. What type of staffing do you see at any given shift to monitor not only the bar, but all your patrons?
Well, I mean, we have another restaurant, though. We actually are like always overstaffed. We have managers on duties all the time, though, and then including myself as well. So I don't think that would be an issue, because we've been doing it for years, though, and then we always overstaff, we're making sure that everybody's like monitoring everyone's, you know, so I don't, I have never come down to that, so.
Okay. How many employees would you have?
From the places we have dining, we have over 35 employees, so, and then we've been managing pretty good, though we have like two managers.
So it's on that kind of scale?
It's the highest scale, we've got like 15,000 square feet on that one, yeah.
So I guess, did we get any comments to the office? No?
Nothing from the
So I'd look for, any other questions, board members?
Yes, sir.
I'd look, yes.
We did check with the police departments in the other communities where they run restaurants, and they've got no issues whatsoever.
Fantastic, thank you, chief.
High praise.
So, as for, before I open it up to the folks in the audience, I'd ask for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye, opposed. Any comments from the folks in the audience? Hearing none, or seeing none? I'd look for a motion.
Moved at the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 138 to approve the application of Chung Sing Inc. doing business as Leskaya, Digu O, manager for an all-alcoholic restaurant licensed for premises of approximately 6,271 square feet of restaurant space in the building now existing or hereafter constructed at 495 Great Road, AKA 601 Constitution Avenue, Littleton, for hours of operation Monday through Sunday from 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM, with issuance of said license to be subject to ABCC approval and passing all local inspections.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
You have a lovely opening.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh. See you, guys. Thank you.
Let us know when the grand opening, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so going back to town appointments, and I apologize for running late, folks. We appreciate your volunteerism to the town, so let's get right into it. Tonight, we have, let's see, Conservation Commission, Council on Aging, Finance Committee, LCTV Advisory Committee, Permanent Municipal Building Committee. So let's start right off with the Conservation Commission.
We have James Pickard here.
I saw Mr. Tierney.
Yeah, Pete Tierney, I think, went upstairs where they're actually meeting, and Andrew's
Oh, no, I'm not up.
Oh, you're, okay, you're
All right, so we have three members...
Andrew's communicating the recommendation of the committee that the three members who are up for reappointment be reappointed.
Yes.
Three members for terms expiring 6:30, and we have 1, 2, 3, 4 applicants.
We have one additional applicant who is here, um, tonight, um...
Well, Mr. Tierney is upstairs. Mr. Pickard is here. Carl Melberg.
He's upstairs as well.
He is. And Shannon. Hi, Shannon.
Hi.
Shannon, why don't you come on up and tell us a little bit about yourself?
My name's Shannon Cafaro. Um, I worked in the environmental consultant business for 14 years. Recently became a stay-at-home mom. Figured that I could contribute to the community with my expertise in the field.
Board members?
And you have, the Conservation Commission also has associate members?
We do.
And do I understand that you're going to be talking with Shannon at some point?
We certainly can.
Okay.
Can always use them.
Right. Board members' questions for Shannon?
Maybe just a comment and a question. Um, I really applaud you getting out there. I wanted to give your time back, and I see that you are even, you know, if this doesn't kind of work out, you're thinking of other avenues as, as well, clean lakes and, and other things. So I think that's great. I hope that no matter what happens, you somehow get involved, because your experience is really unique, and, um, I think it'd be really valuable to have on this particular committee, or at least clean like something. So I guess that's all I'd say, is your experience and willingness to dive in is very much appreciated.
This is a closing.
No, I agree. It's, um, this is what makes the town tick, is the folks stepping up and volunteering, and especially if you have some, some pertinent experience. It's, uh, we get that wealth of knowledge and experience for little, little from us. So thank you very much for stepping up.
Mr. Avella.
Shannon, would you be interested in the associate position?
Sure.
How does that process work, again?
So we make the appointment, but you guys confirm it.
Okay. So, um, Shannon, I, I guess, I echo what the, the board has said. We appreciate everybody that volunteers. We all volunteer. Um, so to see people and new faces step up is fantastic. We really appreciate it. And as Selectman Hebert said, uh, you know, we'll find a spot for you. Don't worry about it.
We're not going to let you go.
We're not going to let you go. You don't have to worry about that. Um, so we appreciate that. Members that are here, Mr. Pickard, would you like to say anything?
I would say if we are looking for people on occasions as projects come up.
Okay. Um, and Pete is upstairs, and then Carl is upstairs. So that being said, I'd look for a motion.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Andrew, what did you say there? The Conservation Commission, they voted what?
We voted to recommend the reappointment of Peter, Carl, and Jim.
Okay.
And those are all for three-year terms, for, through 2018.
So, and then what's our associate? We don't have to say that more.
Well, they're going to bring up the associate matter at the Conservation Commission, and then they'll, we'll make...
They'll vote first. Conservation Commission will vote an associate member first, and we'll, they'll bounce it back to us, and we'll vote to, vote on that matter at our, hopefully, our next meeting.
Moved at the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Pete Tierney, James Carr, Carl Melberg to the Conservation Committee for a term expired June 30 of 2018.
18.
18, sorry.
Second.
I hear a second. It's been moved and seconded for these appointments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Shannon, we, we have a spot for you.
Yes.
We'll see you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you. As Mr. Avella said, there's a vacancy on the...
Thanks for sticking with us.
Standing committee.
Sit in here.
How many years now, Shannon? There's a vacancy on the staring committee for the master plan.
Yes, and we specifically said we wanted a young mother. That would be great.
So if you're, you'd be willing to do that, I mean, we can get you, we have your email address now.
We'll get you that application.
Get you that application out, probably before you're out the door.
Exactly.
Let me make it a personal invitation, Shannon, tomorrow, 7:00 p.m. Shannon, personal invitation tomorrow, 7:00 p.m. here, please.
Babysitting is provided.
Says the babysitter.
No, it's gleavy.
Oh, okay.
Junior member.
Junior, junior member, there you go. All right, moving on, um, Council on Aging. Marjorie, hello, how are you?
Marjorie, the survivor.
Pardon me?
The survivor. There were three term expirations on the Council on Aging. Two of them are stepping down. Barry and George, right, are stepping down after their service and, and our chair of the COA is desiring to stay on for another term.
Only because I'm finally feeling like I've been, oh, just finished my first term, and, you know, it takes a while to get to know everything, and I've just completed actually...
Getting in the groove.
Well, and I just, I was chair this past year, and they actually voted me in to be chair again next year, so it'd be nice if I was reappointed, so I...
Technically only.
Basically, no, it's been a great opportunity. I'm very grateful, you know, to the board. I enjoy it. I think we do, we're just, lots of exciting things happening and things that we can have input in, so working with Pam has been a pleasure.
Outstanding.
That's great.
Board members, Selectman Hebert?
I'm good.
Mr. DeCoste, Mr. Avella.
Thank you.
Well, we always appreciate, as I've stated earlier, the, the volunteerism in, in town is fantastic. But there are two vacancies on the, on the Council on Aging, so please, anybody that's interested, uh, you can get the applications through this town website. I'd look for a motion.
Moved at the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Marjorie Pean to the Council on Aging for a term expiring June 30 of 2018.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you very much. All right, next committee is the Finance Committee. We have, uh, one vacancy and two applicants, Mr. Champney and Mr. Hinckley. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Mr. Hinckley, um, you're an existing member. You want to...
Sure.
What do I want to get back on?
Sure. Uh, yeah, for the past four years, I've been serving on the Finance Committee. Um, I truly enjoy it. I'm a numbers guy. Um, my experience is in municipal finance. I work for, um, a, a town similar sizes to Littleton, Air, a much larger town in, in Chelmsford, a, um, a wealthy, one of the most wealthiest, wealthiest towns in the state, Wayland. Uh, now I'm in a, um, in Hables, or city atmosphere, and I pretty much do everything, you know, financial that, that goes on in the school side. Uh, currently working with, as I put on my, my application, $66 million operating budget. Uh, we just got done fine tuning the FY '16 budget, a little over 70 million, and, um, so I basically do everything financial and, you know, anything, everything that goes on, um, school finance-wise, I have a part in, so.
Okay, thank you. Board members' questions? Ms. Hebert?
I don't think I have a question, something in my press.
Okay.
I know, I see you're, you're a watchdog on our numbers. You know, I see you definitely...
Yes, I, uh, that was... Something I was going to say, I don't mean to interrupt her, was how I define myself as a financial watchdog. I mean, that would, that, I think that fits me to a T, so, and that's basically what I do.
Okay. Mr. DeCoste?
I'm going to ask the elephant in the room question. Um, I've been asked by a number of people and told by a bunch of people that you don't live in town. Is that, would that be a problem with you presenting?
Uh, that, that was, I, that was about something, an issue a year, year and a half ago. I've since taken care of it. I moved. I didn't update my voter status. I've since cleaned all that up, and I am, you know, registered voter in town. I have been the whole time. There hasn't been any interruptions, and, um, my residence is in, on Dogwood Road, basically up the street in Cedar Road, so I do not live in, in Groton. Um, the issue was my brother has moved to Groton, um, and I've been a Littleton resident all along, so, um, that's not an issue.
I too have experiences with staying at the same place. I know his resume.
Mr. Avella?
For you, Chris, what's the most daunting fiscal problem the town is facing and your proposed solution? In 30 seconds, please.
Uh, I think our timing, our issues with, um, we have our all-day budget session in, in November, and what I, I think our biggest issue moving forward is, is to somehow align our schedule, our budget schedule with the school department, because as we know, um, they're roughly about half of the school budget. When you factor in retirement, health insurance, and debt, they're really about 75% of the town budget, and I think whatever we need to do to, um, to come to an agreement of, of, you know, what budget calendar works best so that when we, we dive into the budget, uh, we have their numbers as well as the rest of the town budget numbers, which, which Bonnie does a lot of work with, and I think that's our, our biggest issue moving forward is, is to align our schedules so that, um, when, when we get into the budget season, um, we're not waiting for the school department, and we're, we're on the same schedule.
Who else? I, again, I know Chris also, so, pretty well said. Mr. Champney?
All right.
Very well yourself.
Doing well, thank you.
Good. You want to get back in it?
I do. I've been away for a couple of years, as you well know. Um, have a lot of board experience here in town, 15 years. Served on the Rec Commission, familiar with that budget process. Um, served on Planning Board, obviously served on Board of Selectmen. Uh, I have a, an MBEA and a minor in finance is my undergrad, uh, so I do, I do understand numbers. I am familiar with numbers. I work with numbers professionally all the time, uh, so I, I have the ability to crunch numbers and look at them in, in different ways, and I think this is a great opportunity for me to step in and look at the town's budget processes. I'm concerned where the money's going to come from in the future, work under your direction, because obviously I'm pointed by the Board of Selectmen, and making sure that we get the budget where we need to be and work with the town departments and do what we need to do to make it successful.
Thank you. Selectman Hebert?
Um, similarly, I'm not so familiar with Mr. Champney, so I don't really have any questions. I guess maybe I'd just say, um, I know he was someone that, you know, mentored me during my campaigning and shared his experience with me, and I was always really impressed by what you had to say and the advice you'd give, and I, I think you're the person that I specifically said, please get back involved so we can work together. So I'm familiar with Greg, and so I would look forward to joining as well. This is not an easy decision.
Okay. Mr. DeCoste?
Similarly, I, I have had some experience with Mr. Champney, um, as a member of the school committee, with Champney as on Board of Selectmen. Um, found to be very collaborative, um, not antagonistic, worked well together, and, uh, always seems to be solutions-oriented. Um, I think that the, uh, the real-world experience coming from a business background is a positive asset.
Okay. Mr. Avella?
Similarly, Greg, what do you see as our most daunting fiscal challenge in your proposed solution?
Well, I see in the near future, um, we've got, uh, some expenses that we have with the schools that are coming off the books, you know, the building, the actual buildings are, are coming due over the next several years. So it's what we do with that, those dollars and how we spend them. You just saw the presentation with the fire department. Obviously, that's an issue that's coming up that we need to make sure that we're able to afford, and with your leadership, I'm hoping that we avoid, uh, any two-and-a-half overrides to make those things happen. Similarly, we need to continue financing the school department and financing the, the rest of the town budget, making sure that we have services that the town needs.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Bergman, did we get any, uh, vote on from the FinCom?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Um, again, I'm familiar with Greg also, so, um, you're right, it's going to be a tough decision. Um...
Can I just put one little, the, uh, not interrupt, but there is another vacancy. Um, the town moderator, Peter Wilkins, from what I've heard, is not reapplying, so, um, the town moderator, Tim's, Tim's seat would, is going to be available, so.
Okay. Yeah, 6:30, 15, it expires. When does that process start? Do we know that, Keith?
There's, um, we, we don't know.
Okay. We should reach out to the...
We'll, we'll, we'll reach out to the moderator and find out what his intentions are. We, uh, he was asked about it some months ago, and he indicated that he would make, he would announce his decision when he made it, so.
Okay. Very good.
That's what we'll...
Um, does, does he go through the same process as far as...
No, he doesn't.
Okay. All right, folks, discussions.
Has that resignation been attended? From Mr. Wilkins?
It's a term expiration.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
So, um, I'm sure he made it known that he wasn't interested again, so. Discussion? Panel members, anything? All right, then I would look for a motion.
I move to appoint Mr. Champney to Finance Committee.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. For Mr. Champney, any other nominations? Hearing none. It's been moved and seconded for Mr. Champney for the appointment of Finance Committee. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chris, we'll get you on, um, hopefully through, um, the moderator.
I'll advise the moderator.
Do I need to write something to him, a letter?
Aye.
You're not sure of that?
He, uh, he, he goes through his own procedure.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Champney.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Thanks for talking back.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, LCTV, Littleton Community Television Advisory Committee. Uh, we have two, two members for terms expiring 6:30, uh, and one expiring 2018, and one expiring 6:30, 60. And we have a total of four applicants. Is Leslie here? Hi, Leslie. Yes, Leslie. Um, Millie's here? No, I don't see Millie.
Not here.
Uh, William Vales?
Hi, William.
And Boyd. And Boyd's here. Why don't you, folks, come on up, and we'll, um, you saw the process. We're just going to ask you a few questions. See why you want to get involved in LCTV, the newest and greatest.
Right. New and improved.
New and improved. Leslie?
Always improving.
And again, I'll, I'll echo it again, you know, volunteers stepping up through town is fantastic. We appreciate it always. Uh, Leslie, why don't you tell us?
Okay. Um, I've been a committee member for five years now, and it's a great committee. I think we work well, very well as a team. We've done great things, um, really improved the studio, improved the programming, got the community involved. Um, this has been, film and television broadcasting has been my whole career. Um, 25 years plus. I hate to say, hate to admit, but it's been, it's just really what I, what I enjoy, what I really like, so I'm really happy to have been involved in this, at this level, and, and really to be doing some great things, and I'd love to continue on the committee.
Fantastic. William?
Hi, thanks for this opportunity.
We'll go, we'll go through the, everybody, and then we'll come back and ask you questions. Sorry, William, go ahead.
Thanks for the opportunity to be here. Uh, I got involved in, uh, LCTV right around 2012, uh, doing some film work, and then I started producing some shows through LCTV for the last, uh, since about 2013. Uh, and, uh, my shows, uh, that I've been working on are primarily educational-based. I started with a Littleton Rock show, which is about geology in Littleton, and I've expanded that to some other venues of, uh, Your Backyard, which, uh, takes us through, uh, our conservation land, and Fun with Science, which looks at some really high-technology, uh, stuff. Uh, my background is in, uh, technology. I was a, a software engineer since about 1968, took an early retirement around 2007, and, uh, I'm on the adjunct faculty for UMass Lowell, teaching, uh, information technology since about 1996. I really believe in the mission of, um, LCTV to educate, inform, provide a venue for transparency of our town government, and to involve citizens, you know, in, in producing shows. Um, and I have a blast doing it, so.
You look like it, because I've seen your geology shows over and on again, too.
There's a bunch of them coming. I'm going to plug that, you know.
Good, 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 good.
Great.
Boyd?
Well, I think I'm a little outpaced there, but, um, I'm just interested in, in what you're doing. I have a strong background in electronics, most of my life. I have a business degree, and I'm just interested in being part of the program.
Outstanding. All right, so board members, you have an opportunity to ask our three candidates?
I have a lot of input on this one, as you could imagine, um, so...
Talk of the town?
Yes, exactly. Um, so a couple of things, I guess I probably don't have any questions, because I kind of already have things sussed out a little bit in my mind. So I, I've personally worked with Bill, um, being a co-producer of a show, and I, I would definitely recommend, um, motioning him in, and here's why. I mean, he mentioned it, but he has a really cool vision. I mean, he's kind of a geek, techie geek like me, too, and loves science, and I love that, kind of bringing that whole other facet and, um, to the, to the table. And he also has a lot of interesting, like, I think last time you gave the speech on, um, the, the training on like copyright infringement and...
Fair use.
Yeah, fair use, you know, so he knows a lot of things that maybe you might not expect, so I really enjoy it. Uh, Bill and Leslie, we met recently at the LCTV open house, and actually her children were so nice to come on Talk to Talk at the Town. They were great, and she was there from beginning till end, so I could clearly see the passion, and, um, your experience kind of speaks for itself. Now, Boyd, that, just with that being said, I would say your talents, um, are definitely needed, and there's lots of ways to get involved with LCTV, even if you're not on the board. And me, myself, I, I help out with producing... Me, myself, I help out with producing shows and doing whatever I can because I just was interested as well. So no matter what happens, I think, just like, I heard your name.
Millie?
No, the other lady earlier who we said, we want to get you involved, like we won't let you go. Shannon, thank you, sorry. I would say exactly the same thing, like we need all of you guys, so that's my thoughts.
Okay. Mr. DeCoste.
I haven't been down there and seen all the great work that you guys have done, but I mean, your resumes all speak volumes for each of you and I'm sure that your experience would lend nicely on LCTV's advisory committee. I really, I can appreciate anybody that steps forward. If you're able to bring experience from your own life and your own professional career and share it with the community, my hat's off to you and I appreciate that. I mean, every one of you is, in my eyes, qualified for this position. Thank you for coming forward.
Mr. Vella.
Leslie, twenty-five plus years' experience means you started in middle school.
Thank you.
But certainly I am familiar with you. Bill, I'm familiar with you also and I haven't seen some of your work and talked to you from time to time also. And certainly Millie, I'm familiar with also. I would offer, Boyd, that in much the way Bill has come forward and already began working there, the interest and then the opportunities open up is certainly sometimes it's term expirations, people resigning or just not competing again. So that certainly would be my thought now because looking at everybody, they all want to step forward and help, continue helping and we applaud that, so thank you. Because you said just about everything I could think of saying.
That's rare. Mr. Bergman, did we have anything from the advisory committee on these appointments?
We don't.
You don't? Okay.
Unless Alan has information.
Alan?
Absolutely. Late-breaking.
Late-breaking application?
This is why they were late, because they were busy meeting.
I just, it was late. But I just wanted to say that we are happy to have our current members asking for reappointments. They do a fantastic job. Millie McGovern, who isn't here, of course, Millie's the plank owner, I guess you would call her. She was on the first committee when it first started, back in the late seventies, so she's still going strong.
Well, we only had one channel, right?
About this nineteen seventy. And Mr. Vales is a producer, been working with us for a number of years. The committee, a number of people on the committee ask him to step forward and to apply for a position on the board. And in my estimation, I can't speak because the committee didn't take a vote, but I think we'd all be happy to have Mr. Vales back, as a member. Other gentlemen, welcome. We've got plenty of work for anybody that has time and wants to work with us and we'd be happy to have you.
Okay. Again, as I stated earlier, I think, you know, anybody that really volunteered their time is fantastic. As I stated, we do it. It's great to see new faces come out, to get involved. And as Selectman Hebert said, don't get discouraged. We want you. We know who you are now. And we will, we will call you back, I'm sure. So please get involved with LCTV. LCTV's a fun thing, you know. You see so much of it now everywhere we go. We have an LCTV van, so it's really cool.
It's that procedural question, because we have two terms for going through twenty eighteen and one through twenty sixteen. And I see that Leslie and Millie are the incumbents in the fifteen that would go to eighteen, is that correct?
That's correct.
But is everybody up for running them or...
No, that there are, there are two term expirations and then there's one vacancy that was caused by resignation of Alan Hoff. And so befilling his, the remainder of Alan's term, he moved to Northampton.
I guess I should incline the incumbents towards the twenty eighteen.
So there's three positions.
The incumbents for the, yeah, yeah, I agree. Because the incumbents are expiring, so they are the twenty eighteens, which are...
Just modify the motion.
Yeah. Yeah, the two incumbents, which is Millie and Leslie, a twenty eighteen term. And then either Bill or Boyd for the twenty sixteen.
Oh, okay, gotcha, sorry. Sorry, I didn't see that. Got it. Okay. Move the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Leslie Glorisio, sorry.
Marioso.
Marioso.
Close.
And Milton McGovern for a term expiring six thirty, I mean, sorry, to LCTV Advisor Committee for a term expiring six thirty two thousand eighteen. And William Vales for, to the LCTV Advisor Committee for a term expiring six thirty sixteen. Is that...
Yep.
Second.
They're moved in second and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you very much. And Boyd, we want you.
Yeah.
We want you. Get involved, these folks, these folks, they, you know, they're a busy beehive down there all the time. So thank you very much for stepping up.
Thank you all.
And with Alan here, too, I'd like to really compliment LCTV, super, super, I'd like to compliment LCTV in general, just a super job all the way around. So everything's going well.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Better talk to them about geology.
Congratulations.
All right, PMBC, we have three positions, one position with a term expiring six thirty two thousand seventeen and two positions, term expiring dated June thirty two thousand twenty. We have three applicants, Mr. William Cole, Mr. Stephen Moore, and Mr. Robert Romly. Come on down.
Hey, he's out of uniform.
I'm going to be PMBC for three years and I thoroughly enjoyed dealing with the projects that we deal with, working on contracts. And there are several projects coming up in the very near future, which I would very much like to be involved with. And it's a learning experience, which I'm still learning, but I thoroughly enjoy it. I have a background in construction and look forward to another few years of participating.
Fantastic. Mr. Romly?
As you know, my background is in law enforcement, but Millie suggested that I join the board. I know that I'm taking Jeff Fian's place and it's going to be a big set of shoes to fill, but I've attended the last couple of meetings to see what was going on. It's a very interesting committee. I think I'll bring some sensibility to it. And, you know, I just, it's interesting to see where the dollar's being spent. And I'm around during the day to look at some of the projects that are going on and I think that's, it's important to make sure that we're going to get a buck, every buck that we spend.
Excellent, excellent. Board members?
You'd be lucky to have him. Raise your hands.
Mr. DeCoste.
All right, I served with Mr. Cole on the PMBC as the member from the school committee and he has been building since, didn't you build the manger?
Yeah.
He put my foundation in.
Well, Mr. Cole brings a wealth of experience and knowledge to the PMBC and just having known Mr. Romly as a law enforcement officer has always been level-headed and I think he'd be a good addition as well.
Fantastic.
He's certainly going to bring added sense and he looked at the two of us, former PMBC members, when he said that.
I think he was looking at me.
You've got to bring some common sense.
But certainly very familiar with Bob and Bill and Steve for that matter, too.
Exactly.
It, just recently, Steve is, we know, is working the Green Line Extension Project for the MBTA and they were digging a hole a hundred and ten feet deep for the first Via Duck. And they've just successfully put some of the initial foundations in. So the Green Line Extension, at least it's happening and maybe in our lifetimes we'll get to see it someday.
Sure.
But that clip aside, very seriously, the three gentlemen, forested evening, very well qualified to do this job for us. The PMBC is a very important one because we just talked about the fire station. And the PMBC has been able to save the town money. Joe Clentrow was in the back, chairman. We mentioned Jeff Fian, two distinguished gentlemen who have served our community excellently over the years and helped with keep the costs. And we want to talk about some, not just barking dogs, but biting dogs, those two when it came to the contractors, how we had building the new buildings in town, like the middle school, the police department, the Russell Street renovation, the Alton Building renovation, all those projects, big projects for our town, many millions of dollars. And the PMBC is responsible for executing those programs for the town. So it's a heavy responsibility and thank you for stepping forward.
I echo those also. Mr. Clentrow?
Yes.
Floor is yours.
I just want to say, Steve couldn't make it tonight, he had a meeting. Steve is, if you don't know, Steve's in charge of MPA, MBTA extension, pretty big job and he just, he had a meeting tonight. But the committee highly endorses, endorses all three. We are very busy right now and we can use all the help we can get and so anybody with experience. And one of the things we're trying to do, and Bill will help us, anybody in town, we chase our projects in town, we go out and have to look at them. That saves us from paying engineering costs for an engineer to go out and do it. So we highly endorse the three of them.
Thank you very much. All right, and having worked with the PMBC on many projects and knowing Mr. Romly, growing up here and...
How many times have I arrested?
I didn't bring that up.
He's got a clean slate.
So I'd look for a motion.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint William Cole, Stephen Moore, Robert Romly to the Permanent Municipal Building Committee for, oops, hold on, who's going in the seventeen?
Actually, it would be for two thousand twenty, they're five-year terms. The reappointments, Bill and Steve are two thousand twenty. And the, perhaps would be two thousand seventeen.
Okay. Can I have a one second?
So moved. Right.
Right. Move the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Robert Romly to the Permanent Municipal Building Committee for a term, for a position with term expiration of June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. And Stephen Moore and Bill, or William Cole, for position to the Permanent Municipal Building Committee for positions with term expiration date of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
They're moved in second and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Welcome back.
Thanks, Bob, welcome back.
Thank you. We're jealous.
How'd you do?
Keep joining.
We can find one.
All right. I'm going to just do a little shuffle here. I'm going to bring up seven and we'll hold off on the Transit Authority. We have Megan, the Chair of the Littleton Common Sewer Feasibility Study. You know, we were going through this process and it made it so far and then we stopped and took a, took a break. We need, we've heard from the, what was it, the Economic Development Committee and there's another committee. The, no, there was one other committee that brought up the sewer feasibility.
The Common Development?
There you go. The Littleton Common Development Committee, that's what it was. So what the board wants to do is bring the sewer feasibility study back into a position where we can kind of wrap things up and see what the next steps really are for Littleton. And it's never been brought to any type of vote. It's, you've gone through the public process, you've done a lot of education. We've heard from the Chairman of the Board of Health. They have some concerns about some systems down in the common. They're actually actively, and we have the Chair in the audience and I'll ask him some questions later, about his board's process in which he's going to undertake to see what systems are good, bad, and the ugly. So why don't you just bring us up to speed as to where we were, what, almost eighteen months ago?
Eighteen months ago.
Yes.
Which is why I'm sitting with a pile of notes. So thank you for inviting me to come and speak. However, it's not been on my mind for about eighteen months, so I had to actually refresh my own memory. I was asked to come here tonight to give an update, but our committee has not met since October of two thousand thirteen, so there really isn't anything new. I'm more than happy to share a review of what it all was. So back in two thousand ten, there was an Economic Development Committee back then as well, who was working with the town for economic development purposes. MAPC had made a recommendation to study to see if sewer would be feasible in the common area to try to build up our town center and make it easier for a variety of different businesses to come to town. So the background is that the driving force between forming the Littleton Common Sewer Feasibility Study Committee was actually economic development. But we found through our study that there's actually other benefits as well if we were to move forward with that. I will read to you what our charge was. We were charged with determining if wastewater treatment facility would be feasible in the Littleton Common area. The area of study was basically from CVS up to where Little, the Littleton Inn is and then to where the police station is, all the way up to Toyota. So that's the area of study. Our, our committee decided that we would make a definition of what, what is the definition of feasibility relative to this study? And we came up with the definition that as wastewater collection and treatment system that is affordable and paid for by the users of the system only. So if, if we could find a system that was affordable and paid for by the users of the system only, then we would determine it was feasible. Who are the users of this system? Approximately ninety-eight commercial property owners, a very small percentage of residents that happen to live in that, that area of study, but majority is ninety-eight commercial property owners that could potentially tie into and use a wastewater treatment system for Littleton. So the, the study that I was a part of from two thousand ten until two thousand thirteen for about three and a half years was basically a conceptual study. So we were trying to determine if there was a concept of, of a sewer system that could be feasible and we hired a consultant, Charles River Watershed Association. They, we were, we were granted initially fifty thousand dollars to do our study. After we hired our consultant, they applied for a grant and they were awarded a hundred thousand dollars. So what we ended up with was about two to three times the worth of what we would have produced on our own. So we ended up getting a wonderful study, two hundred-page document, that was looking at a non-traditional type of sewer system. Because in the end, I can tell you that a traditional, conventional wastewater treatment sewer would not be feasible for the small area with only approximately a hundred users of the system. So any conventional system like the one that's enacted would not be feasible. But using old components that have been around forever in a new way, which was called a smart sewer system, was determined to be feasible. So our study, the end result was, back in September of two thousand thirteen, I had advised the committee as the Chair that we had a decision to make, which was to ask our appointed committee, the Board of Selectmen at the time, to either, we were going to present that it's not feasible or if it is feasible, then we're going to ask that it now be moving to the next step, which would be going on to a preliminary design. So going from concept to actually designing it to answer the rest of the questions that we had. Because there's a lot of questions. So we, we have a lot of moving parts. We left it with a lot of moving parts and questions and there was nothing really more we could do until we moved on to, started designing the actual smart sewer system that we found would be feasible, could be feasible potentially. So just to give you some details, we are looking at a very, very small system, thirty thousand gallons a day, assumed based on what currently exists in that study area. Approximately a hundred connections. It would be a system that would have a capital cost initially of, if it were built based on just our concept study and of course a design would give us a more specific number, but the number we were looking at would be approximately... at would be approximately 4,000, oh, sorry, $4,300,000 for the initial capital. And then there's an energy component that is approximately 3,200. So altogether, it's about 7.5 million for the entire smart sewer system that we were looking at for the first phase. The energy component is questionable, and the design phase would answer those questions to see if that's something we would use and if it would be worth it. And I'll get into that a little bit later. But so how would it be affordable, how would it be feasible and affordable to the users of the system? And I always bring this graph up, which was that we, at the time, were saying that it would be affordable because it would be paid for by the users proportionally through betterment fees and user fees. So through betterments and user fees. So proportionally. And proportionally is the key term. Because we were assuming at the time that possibly Sam Park's and the Point and Wells IBM would be considered, those are actually, in the common area study, their commercial property owners. They have a huge property. They, they would be huge users. They would be paying a huge amount if they were to tie in at the time. All of the little, small parts of the graph are the tiny little commercial properties, which is a small part. So if you're using a small part, your user fees would probably not be that big. So let me just get back to my notes here. Basically, the numbers that we found had estimates. And again, this is a concept study. A more detailed definite number would be found through a preliminary design. Monthly user betterment fees would be around $13,000 estimated with monthly, I'm sorry, that's not monthly, a betterment fee of $13,000 with monthly user fees of approximately $66 to $197 a month based on usage. In the worst-case scenario, if we moved on to start designing this type of thing, and it, and it was found that either because the soil wasn't good enough, or that not enough of those 100 users connected to make it worthwhile, the town could potentially be stuck with paying off whatever part of that design was spent to design it to find out that it doesn't work. So in the absolute worst-case scenario, we found that the town could potentially be held on the hook for part of that design. The design was estimated at $558,000. Again, that was part of our study. We hired a consultant to crunch the numbers and come down with as specific of an estimate as they could for doing that design, which is the next step. In the best-case scenario, they do the design, they find a place for this, enough users connect, that the cost of the design would then be rolled into the construction costs and tied in to betterment fees, be paid off by betterment fees. And then users of the system would be paying for usage through, just like you would pay for electricity or water or any kind of other, yeah. So, so in the worst-case scenario, there is a risk that if the preliminary design finds this isn't actually feasible, and the concept wasn't going to work, and the energy component isn't going to help pay it off, and it won't be that affordable, then we are stuck with paying whatever part of that design happened. So the design itself would be phased. So we wouldn't spend the whole $558,000 right off the bat. We'd do, we'd do phase one, find out, you know, if, you know, feel it out a little bit. And then if it came to a halt, we didn't spend that whole $558,000. So, so that was kind of where we left it. I don't know if you would like details about the actual smart sewer system itself. I could literally talk for two and a half hours about this. I had an entire banker's box full of files on this. So I had to kind of choose how I wanted to present in a matter of 15 minutes to the information. Because the smart sewer system does have some interesting components, and it, part of it makes it affordable because of energy resource, renewability, which there's a lot of interest. And specifically, the Department of Energy Resources, hold on, let me just make sure I have it correct.
Energy Resources?
Yeah. The Department of Energy Resources could potentially have grant money that would help subsidize the pay, the price and the cost of the design. So it's affordable, it could be affordable for multiple reasons. The system itself could potentially pay for itself. There could be grant money available to help pay for this and subsidize the cost. And if it all kind of comes together and works, it could work. And then the end result would be that we would be able to have control, because sewer is a very powerful tool. We could control indirect growth, and we could inhibit sprawl, protecting our open spaces, protecting our farmlands, things that, that Littleton values. Whereas, you know, other areas will build a huge sewer system that would actually invite economic development and sprawl, like Acton, think of Great Road, strip malls, things like that. That's not necessarily what we want here in town. We want a small system that would help us to fill the vacancies that currently exist, and allow for more diverse types of businesses to come into the common area. So that's the whole point and the idea behind the smart sewer system. And I can get into more details if you'd like. But any questions?
Board members, before I comment. Melissa?
Okay.
All right. So I guess what we, what we're looking to do is to rekindle this. And let's now bring it forward to the Board of Health, get the Board of Health, that's one piece that was never done. Get their opinion as to what systems downtown are failing, what systems that they feel are in need of repair. You know, this board has had discussion about, with, with the economic development, the, the common betterment committee. We need to do something, because there are still vacancies from not just three and a half years ago, when you started your committee, but 15 and 20 years ago, that still aren't filled in the common. And we talk about the diverse opportunities down there for the, the overlay district, that we can have some retail with some living in space above. So it's all good stuff. We just need to now, I think, we have a feasibility study committee. We need to rename it and focus into either an implementation or a, some type of committee where we can take it to the next step.
My suggestion would be to really look at the Department of Energy Resources for, for potential subsidized grants to move forward. I don't think the commercial property owners are going to become invested without having something to show them. We tried to reach out to the commercial property owners, because essentially, this is going to benefit them. It's, we're not searing the whole town. There's a lot of misconceptions, as you know, about this whole study. And the, the whole point is to provide the commercial property owners a way to tie into something that could allow them to make full use of the mixed capacity. We have mixed-use zoning that allows for mixed use. And right now, people are very limited. If you're a property owner, you can't have a dentist there. You can't have a restaurant there. You can't have any other restaurants than what currently exists. And so it's, it's something that, without the users of the systems having some incentive to get involved and really want this, I think we're going to have to reach out to anyone that's willing to fund this type of project and get funding and money. And I think the Department of Energy Resource would be a good first step to go to and maybe have someone, either on your committee, or, I'm sorry, your board, or possibly the town administrator kind of take the lead on, on looking for this grant money and seeing if we can obtain it.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
On the, on the energy part, so in aerobic digestion.
Mr. Mitchell is the chair of the Board of Health. So Brad, I'd like you to not only ask Megan a question, but we had a conversation about you really wanting to take a little bit of assistance.
Sure. So why don't I address that first and ask the question. So the Board of Health, you know, I've been on there a year, and my understanding is periodically, people come up in the common, and they, and there are a lot of systems that are in technical failure, which means that they don't meet the requirements of Title V, but they're functioning well enough that they're not catastrophic failure. I also know that we have a number of properties along the common, businesses which are struggling to meet their growing capacity, and their systems really aren't designed for that. And I think there's been some reticence on the part of the Board of Health to pull the trigger and require new systems to be put in, largely because we know a potential system is looming. We are having a discussion about tying up a lot of loose ends, including that one. The other thing I'd add is my understanding is that the IBM system, which to my, I believe is functioning, but it's a 40-year-old system which is near the end of its life, which might also mean it in this one. So we're looking at, and my suggestion to the board, we're meeting tomorrow night on this, is to do a systematic survey of the properties there. I know that we have some information, spot information on some of the properties which are in technical failure. But I think it would be helpful for both the Board of Health, as well as to the sewer committee and the planning committees, to know how many of those systems are really being challenged and how many need to be replaced, because they are the cost-benefit analysis. And aside from all the benefits, public health is one of them. We don't need sewage flowing up on the common. If we wait too long, that's a distinct possibility.
May I?
You may. Yes, absolutely.
It was told by the Littleton Water Department to our committee time and time again, that, you know, even though there are benefits to the system we looked at, which would be hugely beneficial to the common, and there, there, I, I understand there is a problem with high nitrates in the common area. I was always told that that wasn't the primary reason why we did our study. But if it's getting to that point, we've always said that there's an opportunity cost here. If we don't take advantage of this sooner than later, someday we may have to take advantage of this, or we might have to get a sewer. And at that point, those, that grant money that could be available now may not be available to us. So I, I don't, I don't think that, you know, the, the initial reason why our committee was appointed was to address any kind of public health issue was for economic development. So I mean, that's, that was always the focus. But if it's getting to that point, then, you know.
Just another benefit.
But it is a component. What I foresee is either some businesses having to lay out a lot of money to continue to operate, and some businesses not being operated at the capacity they have been or would like to grow to. I did have one question on the energy component. Is that in aerobic digestion for electricity or heat?
To capture the methane gas.
And that would be used to generate electricity?
Yes. And, and it would be also, there's multiple things. It would also, because it's an energy-efficient, renewable system, apparently, people could purchase carbon credits. We could charge tipping fees for anyone that wanted to add to the digester. So if anyone had waste, like from a grocery store, like Mark Basket or Donalins, they could potentially come and dispose of that, their, their waste into the digester, and then we could charge tipping fees and make money that way as well. So it could generate money to pay for itself, and possibly theoretically, it could even be a source of revenue. But the source of revenue would mostly be from making full capacity of our common area through economic and business development, which could end up bringing back millions of dollars to our town in a long run.
I agree.
Board members, questions?
I just have a comment.
Sure.
I just, I think it's great to be doing this up and being aware that there is potential issue. It's always better to be proactive than to be reactive, because when you're reactive, you're paying through those. And you not have to take advantage of different systems. And, you know, I think that if we can rekindle this and move it along from feasibility or within feasibility, whatever we call it, I don't think that's really important. I think the fact that we're taking a look at it and rekindling it to be proactive is what's important now. We just need to make sure that we're working together. Brad's here. Megan, thank you very much for your time. That was a great summary.
Oh, good.
Someday, I'll buy a cup of coffee and give it two and a half hour.
A few cups. Only way the septic works.
But thank you very much for all the input. And I appreciate the fact that the board is taking action and being proactive.
Thank you to Megan and the other board members, too, because you did put a lot of work in this, leading up to 18 months or so ago.
Yeah.
So thank you there. But now I think we're talking about mechanics of how do we proceed forward. And Brad, you being here, I think is useful also. And that is, is this something that, certainly we need quantifiable data. Anecdotally, you talked about some systems where they're technically catastrophic or what, and some along the common. You're talking about bringing it up to the board tomorrow and actually beginning a survey as to the status of those systems.
I'd like to get input from the other, other boards. But my, my suggestion to the Board of Health will be that we do a systematic survey of the properties in there and the status of their septic systems. I may be coming back to you with some assistance with that. At first, I need to get buy-in. I need to research what that will take. But I do think we need to do, we need to know what it, what we're facing if we don't do this as well.
I believe that to be essential. As Megan said, initially, economic development committee was the impetus to get this moving. And certainly, viewing it from that perspective is important also to the town. But then also, from the public health aspects, perhaps more daunting, should we start seeing catastrophic failures, as you've described? Because the amount of money that may be involved to replace those systems requires a business then to just cease doing business. So it becomes both public health, and then certainly an economic issue here for the town. My thought process on this, and this is just thinking aloud at the moment, is that this is somewhat handed off to the Board of Health to start running with this ball, so to speak. And then involving, and we had the PMBC here earlier, not too bad they had already left. But the PMBC has been responsible for structure, you know, town structures. This is part of the town infrastructure. We don't have a sewer board in town, so there's nobody to go to there at this point, or sewer commission. So when we start talking about letting out RFPs, request for proposals and the like, for some of these preliminary studies.
We've already done that.
Yep. Involving them, I think is essential also. But step one, perhaps, is asking Brad to continue what you are proposing with your board members, and going out there and surveying what it is we have in this common area that we've described, that the sewer may serve, and see what we actually look like. And what it's going to look like five years from now, because if we made the decision right now to build a sewer, it's not happening before five years are up, or so, give or take. So, so we have to, not just today, but what are we looking at some point in the future? I heard from Dover on that, and you would best know what timeline to use or what future to look at, I guess.
Yeah, it's, it's a long time. So, I mean, one thing to add, too, is it's not just about wastewater. It's also about replenishing the water that is drawn from any kind of wastewater treatment plant, and replenishing it back to our own environment to protect our wells and the well water. Is that something that there was a, I remember hearing that if there was a, ever another really bad drought, that the well water could be impacted eventually. So, but.
In my personal view of the sewer, it's a tool.
Yep.
It's a tool to help us accomplish something we may want. Certainly, there's a lot of open discussion. There will remain open discussions to what we want in the common going forward. But we have the common committee. We also have the master plan, update, steering committee, that's in the process of doing some things also. So there's a lot of discussion, different boards that are looking at the future of the town, and what do we want our town to look like come 2030? What do we want it to look like? The sewer may be a tool to help us build that, or it may not be the right tool, and we just skew it as a option. But certainly, my support at this point is continuing, I hate to say the words, continue studying, because any committee can continue studying something forever.
Yeah.
Well, beyond that.
Yeah, we need to just get more detailed in the study, definitely.
Absolutely.
And that's it. I would offer our board formally request the Board of Health to pick up the ball on this at this point, and start to go forward, and give us some preliminary planning on how they view this, and now using the work that this feasibility study has done, build upon it, and then come back to us.
Well, I see it more than the Board of Health. I think this board has to take a lead also. And I want to stay active with it in regards to exactly what you said. What resources are out there that may be available, whether we do it through the town administrator's office or the planning board, you know, because they have to have a piece in this puzzle also. But I think the Board of Health needs to take lead in that one big question. What do we have that's in failure or potential failure, or technical failure, as you called it? We need to know that so that we can educate the town, because this is going to be an education process for the entire community to understand, as you said earlier, there's a lot of misinformation out there. There was a website started that was, you know, just filled with misinformation. So we want to be able to now take advantage of nice calm environment, I think, be able to re-energize the sewer feasibility study committee.
Rename it.
Rename it somewhat, to, to be able to answer that one question. Is, you know, design, is it actually capable and be done without using taxpayers' money, you know, or paying for it through the users themselves? So we need to, we need to figure that out. And I'd like to suggest that when we get the full board back, we have another brief conversation on maybe the July 13th meeting, Keith, in regards to this, so we can get Mr. Knox's, he's, he's been around for a long time and been involved with all this stuff, too. And I'd ask that the Board of Health report back, possibly, Brad?
Sure, absolutely.
To, to what you To what your board finds. And we're going to have a joint meeting with the planning board? Is that coming up? No? Yes? Or anything?
I don't know that we've scheduled anything yet.
Okay. So, we should at least reach out to the planning board, let them know what our intentions are, and as Paul said, the PMBC. Let's just get people back involved and see what we can do.
Jim, I think key to this, too, is, I mean, a lot of the opposition I've heard, too, even planning for the sewers based on misinformation that we're going to turn the entire downtown into a strip mall. So, I think it's key that, and I'd like to be able to do this from the Board of Health as well, to characterize what we're doing and why, and what that downtown will look like, because it, in the past, I know it's been a huge distraction for people just trying to do basic investigatory work.
Sure, sure. And just, I'll let you go, Megan. You know, the simple part is, take a look at the overlay district. I mean, we control what we want to see in that downtown area with that overlay district and the zoning that's there. And the nice part is, we can say we want this type of structure, we want this type of frontage, and we want this type of business. So, the town is really in control with the zoning down there. I'm sorry, Megan.
I was just going to say that in one of our present, public presentations that we did, we brought up images that the town actually, I think back in like 2008 or something, or 2009 or 10, the town meeting voted on images that they'd like to see for the character of Littleton. And, you know, we brought those images up. So, there actually is something already done that I can share with you about, you know, the character and what we want it to look like.
Just so I don't offer, don't want to get caught up in semantics. This board maintains oversight, 100%. I don't see this board being the lead agent in the exercise, though. The Board of Health, statutorily and regulatory, you control septic, and I presume you would also control sewer.
Just on the extent, yes.
Yes. So, that's why I think when we say, who's going to take the lead and actually do the legwork? Because I don't see the town administrator, and Keith, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm trying to protect you here a little bit, but your time to running this to ground, sort of.
I'm not saying that. I think the Board of Health is very specific in what they're engaged in. What I'm saying is, this board can't let it go another eighteen months. We've got to keep it on the front burner. And if we need to use our resources for this board to do some investigatory, looking into some types of grants or anything like that, by all means, we can engage the planning board and some other town staff, too. That's all I'm saying. I don't want, I don't want Keith or Bonnie out there testing sewer systems, that's for So, let's reconvene or have another discussion on the 13th. You're more than welcome to come back, but I want to bring Mr. Knox up to speed, so we can try and formulate what we're going to do and what we're going to call our next step in our next portion, so.
So, July 13th.
July 13th. Although, I don't see any hands up, but if any of the crowd have any questions or comments, I'll be willing to listen. Seeing none, fantastic, Megan. And as always, we appreciate all you have.
All right.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great summary.
Okay. Bouncing back to Five C, the Monticent Regional Transit Authority Advisory Board Representative Reappointment. So, this has been Mr. Bergman, but recently, Mr. Bergman, you were re-elected to your vice chair as?
Yep. Vice President of NA PC, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and also as Chair of the Magic Subregion.
Fantastic.
So, just on a roll for all of these regional assignments that the board has given me. But there's one in particular that had also shared with the board, that another regional entity that we're working on is our Crosstown Connect Transportation Management Association with four of our neighboring towns, at least Acton and Boxborough, Maynard and Westford. And I shared with the board on Friday that those five towns, for their Crosstown Connect Venture, are going to be getting a very prestigious Local Government Excellence Award from my professional association, the International City County Management Association. That will be presented in Seattle in September, and we're very excited about that. I think it's great recognition for the things that Littleton is doing with its neighbors to solve our problems, and it's a proud moment. So, really, really appreciate the opportunity that the board has given me to, you know, get out and be working in the region on our town's behalf, so.
Well, I can, I can, I can say that, you know, the, let's see, this is my seventh year on the board. And when I first started, Keith, you were very active even then, but, you know, as we progressed through time, you seemed to really get out there and represent the town also. I want to say thank you for that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. To the point where, when I go to a meeting on transportation or on economic development in our region, or even the Boston area, when they see me coming, they invariably mention Littleton and what, and what they're saying. I've seen the Secretary of Economic Development, Jay Ash, who's a friend from, when he was President of NA PC, he sees me in the room, he invariably mentions something that he knows Littleton is asking for, and it really helps to be on people's radar screens.
That's great.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Now, notwithstanding that, I will go back to MART, where we've got some problems, and I'm chairing the Finance Committee to help close their budget deficit, but they need some quality attention there, so I would, under circumstances, be glad to go back to MART for another year.
And I know we've had discussion about possibly changing it, so legislative issue going forward.
Yeah, we're looking at, in fact, it's one of the issues that Crosstown Connect is looking at very seriously with the Monticent and Lowell Regional Transit Authorities. Half of our towns are in MART, half of them are in Lowell. And we had a meeting last week with representatives of both of those transit authorities, and actually, what we're looking to do is, we're coming up with the idea for a pilot program. We're going to test some of the issues that seem to confront us when we cross the boundary. But it shouldn't be, if we've got a shuttle that's in Littleton, and it's going through Acton on its way to Concord, that Acton's in the Lowell region, we're in MART, and there are some things you can't do for that, just because of reasons. And we want to try to work those out to the benefit of all of our citizens.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a worthy cause to try my best on it. Any comments, board members?
Question, because we know there are some budget issues going on with MART.
Yeah.
What's the direct impact in Littleton with those issues?
At this point, the, the impact is not significant. And I'll say this guardedly, because the deficit that MART is facing right now, the problem they're facing, is that they are running a current-year deficit of between a quarter and a half million dollars, when the law no longer allows a regional transit authority to run a deficit of any amount. In the past, MART has routinely run a deficit of 1.5 million dollars or more, which the old law allowed them to just add on and then borrow against. Cumulatively, it was up to 20 million dollars. The law was changed, you can't do that anymore. The Mass DOT has stepped into this, into the fray. It's been attending all of our MART Advisory Board meetings. They've offered the fix that for whatever dollar amount MART is short in this fiscal year, by June 30, Mass DOT will advance MART, so they will, so that MART can close its books in balance. But whatever the amount is that we get this year, that MART gets this year, Mass DOT will withhold next year. So, we're poised at MART to have a budget meeting early, in early July, to cope with whatever the amount of the deficit is. There are a number of other moving parts, though, in the MART budget, that the fees have just been approved to be increased, after not having been increased for maybe 10 years. So, there's some additional revenue there. There's some significant cost-saving measures that may be able to be implemented through, through a, some recent hires in their financial management team that were needed to be able to navigate through their troubled financial waters. And that there are some other possibilities that we're actively pursuing of additional revenues or income from various sources. So, at the end of the day, at the end of the next fiscal year, through a combination of things, there could be more money coming in, lower costs, so that this, let's say, if it's a quarter of a million dollars in Mass DOT funds that they don't get, that those things could be made up from other sources. But it will require looking at, making sure that things stay on, stay on top. There's no legislative mechanism by which the assessment to the local communities can be increased beyond what it is, that we, we can go up, I think they can go up by two and a half percent, or maybe, they're actually, no, they're capping it at $68,000 for us. So, there's no, right now, there's no mechanism by which the, the member towns can be made to make up the difference. And we are all motivated around the table there, including the three mayors from Gardner, Lemonster and Fitchburg, to try to make sure that none of our towns have to be impacted by what's going on at MART, but.
Excellent rundown. Thanks a bunch. And you had two modest, not mentioning some of the inputs you've had in helping those fixes come about, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Any questions? Look for a motion.
Mr. Burris, I'm voting to reappoint Town Minister Keith Bergman to serve as the Town of Littleton, says he'd need a representative on the MART Advisory Board for a term of July 1st, 2015, through June 30th, 2016, and to so notify the Monticent Regional Transit Authority.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Keith. Okay. Item number 9A, I ask for a quarterly update on capital improvements plans. Bonnie?
Sure. Basically, what I do is just print it out directly from our general ledger reports, the list of open articles with unextended balances, approved by Tommy Cabo. They are broken down by department. And in general, anything after three years, we try to close under our financial policies, unless the project is not complete. So, the incentive is to get these projects kind of wrapped up fairly quickly. Each article, I have the date that it was approved by town meeting and the original amount. You can see carry forward, so on the first one, like the Sewer Feasibility Study, where we never actually took any formal action to close that, that balance has been renewed. So, that's the first one under the Board of Selectments Control. The second one is under my department for assessors' training services, the 25,000 that will probably be finished by the fall of this coming year.
Going to use it all?
Yeah. Yes.
Just because we told you to, you know, update it, doesn't mean you have to spend it.
Actually, it's bringing in more money, because we're using some consulting services to do personal property, so. IT, there are a few articles that should be wrapped up also in the next six months. I could check with Nancy on those. Planning Board, the master planning article. This does not include the balance that was appropriated for May of next year. We also have some of the PMBC articles for facilities and maintenance, so you can see each one. There were some amendments done at the special town meeting this spring, they're reflected here. Can we go into police?
Well, let's go. Are we, are these in process, or do we know the status of them?
I, I think, I think that's a PMBC, and give an update on these, because there are a lot of moving, they are very busy.
That's, yeah, that would be very helpful.
Okay.
Especially on these big contracts, 190, 132, 114,000, you know, and, you know, there's no reason why the school committee can't, we can't ask the school for an update on these, too.
I can say most of these are being handled by the.
PMBC? Okay.
Under police, it's mostly equipment. There's a $1,000 remaining from, actually, I'm sorry, the radios, yeah, the radios, which will be expended by the end of this year. The cruisers, vehicle maintenance, and the radio maintenance will also be closed out at the end of the year.
So, here's my issue with some of these. You know, at annual town meetings, we present to the town projects that they expect to be done in that fiscal year. So, if we need to look at our policies, you know, it's not a lot of money, but to clean things up, you know, I think we should take a look at our policy to make sure that, once a fiscal year is done, the money's gone. Let's get it back in, let's, you know, it's expired, so to speak. Because the lingering is just too much. In the case of special projects, I get it. But when we're talking about vehicle maintenance from fiscal year 13, let's clean it up and be done with it, 400 bucks or whatever the case may be. So, if during our policy review?
That's actually, that's this fiscal year. It was approved last May, which is for fiscal 15.
Last May is 13. May of 13 is for fiscal year 14.
Are you talking about the radios?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, just anything, anything in, you know, over a year old, that's all I'm saying.
And under the policies, the policies might need to be reviewed again.
Yeah.
Because they do say, in three years, you need to have this.
Right. Three years is a bit much.
Three years is too much, we can.
Yeah, a bit much. I mean, we tell folks, fiscal year 16, we're going to spend X amount of money for these projects. Now, we understand bigger projects. These smaller things, clean them up and be done with them. That's my feeling. I don't know about the rest of the board.
Okay.
Now, if we want to start looking at the policy again on that, maybe there's something to toss back as we work through this next year.
Sure.
With the Financial Management Policy Working Group.
Yeah.
Because certainly, some categories of money, and you used to be on state money, money expires. Federal government does the same thing, depends on the sort of acquisition procurement it is, whether it's a one-year, three-year, 10-year, like cycle on the money.
Sure.
But we're not building ships, so we don't have to worry about.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, you know, a fire truck is a fire truck is a fire truck. We don't need three years to spend a fire truck. It's a fire truck.
But if you like, maybe we just put that on the table for the.
What, the fire truck?
The financial plan.
Yes, I agree. We can review it during our policy review meeting, too. Sorry about that, Bonnie.
Oh, no, that's okay. The next department is fire and EMS. There are a number of articles here, and my, my understanding is that the, some of the building issues that were approved in like fiscal, you know, or May of 2012, the chief is kind of hanging on to some of those monies for potential use for renovations of the station.
Okay. But again.
For example, the exhaust, that's 68,000.
But again, you know, here it is. We tell the townspeople, we're going to spend this for this project. So, if we want to re-focus on something else, I'm okay with that, so long as people know we're going to be doing X instead of Y, you know? But again, it's, you know, time, time sensitive.
Some of those are on the PMBC document.
Correct.
And have been, because I was there.
Maybe you were the holder.
I am. Is the fly anywhere?
Sorry, Bonnie, go ahead.
No, that's okay. There are a number of school articles. The schools is generally pretty good about, you know, getting the work done and scheduled pretty quickly. A lot of these are, again, facility and equipment needs, but they're, they're pretty tight with the schedule, so. And they do work closely with PMBC also.
Mm-hmm. It's a lot of money.
It is.
It's a lot of money.
Highway and streets. Jimmy is doing some cleanup with these now also, gave both highway and fire, and I'd like to kind of close these accounts out and clean them up.
Yeah, and if they don't need to spend the $387.90 on a rear boom flail mower, you know, just say you don't need it, and we can put it back into the general fund or whatever. Just because it's there doesn't mean you have to spend it. Or, I'm just not picking on you, Jim. The fire, what is it, the fire engine? All these old ones, these old ones.
Perhaps the best way to approach this, because this is probably the first time I've asked Bonnie to do this this way, because I can recollect at least, is that if we're going to do a line-by-line analysis of this, is that we ask the departments to provide Bonnie with information, so that she can speak factually, or if that particular department wants to be present on this evening, or the evening we do this, to speak to it. Because otherwise, we're somewhat approaching this somewhat speculatively, you know, Because otherwise, we're somewhat approaching this somewhat speculatively, you know, with certainly our opinions, that we like or don't like a certain amount of money being left over from a fiscal year, and there may be a very good reason, and we're exhausting conversation on it needlessly.
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. So, why don't we do this, we ask for quarterly, this is our first run at it. Our next quarter, why don't we get the input of the department heads, and have them show up early on in the meeting, so that they can talk about what they've done with their, their money that the town has so graciously given them to--
And PMBC.
And PMBC, absolutely. Anybody that's, anybody that's, has authority in these spending issues, I would like to see, just as PJ said, what are you, what are you doing, you know, and get their opinion on it. So, let's say, July, August, September, we'll, we'll have it on one of our meetings in September. Sorry, go ahead. Where were you?
Cemetery.
Yep.
I know the cemetery expansion has been an ongoing project, this has taken a number of years. But there is work done each year, and there's a lot of permitting involved, so it just, it takes a ton. And the building repairs is, is finished. Elder and Human Services, there's a needs assessment that was approved this past fall, so that will be--
The one right now, right?
Yes. You said August, she may have results.
Mm-hmm.
Library, they have their planning grant that was approved in fiscal 12 that started to get extended this fiscal year as they make their way through the, the feasibility process. But I would expect that that might, you know, carry forward into next year. And the furniture, they will spend by the end of the fiscal year, it's almost all done now. That $89 for long lake security will be closed out at year end.
What kind of security?
Like, they had, there's some camera systems installed, because there was some vandalism. And the 300th celebration, there's about $31,000 remaining in that account. There are some expenditures that are coming through, as far as the legacy program goes. But I would expect that will probably carry over into the fall before it's wrapped up.
But it's very telling, 1.5 million unencumbered. That's a lot. So thank you very much. I think, as, as Mr. Avella said, having everybody responsible for those funds come before us and just give us a little heads up and say, yep, it's all good, or this is what we're doing, and this is why we're doing it, would be very helpful for everybody involved. All right, thank you. All right, 9B, Cooper Farm, Mass General Law, 61A right of first refusal. Schedule a public hearing on the seller's request. So Keith and I, as approved by this board, met with the seller, the Cooper, of which Sheri is representing the Cooper family. We met with Sheri and a potential, the potential buyer for this property. During that discussion, we talked about the options of which the town has, and I think that there were three options for this property. Take it out of 61A, wait a year, they're available to develop in any way they want. Option two is to have the town exercise its 61A right of first refusal and buy the property. Or option three, have the, both the Cooper representative and the seller come before us in a public hearing, to see if this board, from what we hear at that hearing, is willing to waive the 61A first right of refusal. So, that's where we're heading. Keith, did I forget anything out of that?
Well, I, I think what, it was, it was a very helpful meeting that, that we had with Attorney Sheri Gould and, and the, and the others, and, and Town Council was, was there as well, Tom Harrington was there as well. And the, the main thing that we tried to do is to see, is there a way that we can vet the proposal that's been submitted, get community input on it? And then, if the, if there's a, a desire on the, on the part of the townspeople to, to have us exercise a right of first refusal, that we would want to be able to bring that matter to a town meeting in the normal course of events, which for us would ideally be a November town meeting, when we're planning to meet anyway. So we talked about what would a timetable look like to be able to vet the proposal and get that input. And what we came up with was the idea of, if we spent July and August, basically, if the Board of Selectmen spent July and August in a public hearing environment, where we'd open a hearing on July 13th, have here a presentation from the, from the seller and the buyer about what's intended, what their intention is for the property, and then invite public input on that process. We'd take it in written form, either that night or over the course of the summer, and the goal would be for the Board of Selectmen to be able to make a decision, because it's the selectmen's decision to be made, by around Labor Day, of whether to waive the town's right of first refusal. That's the selectmen's decision of whether to waive. If the selectmen, as the chair says, if the selectmen decided to waive it because of, you know, because that, if that were to, to be a sentiment that we hear at the public hearing, or if there were concerns that folks have about the proposal are adequately answered during the vetting process, then one possible outcome is to have this board waive the right of first refusal, and, and off, off you go. Another, the other option, as the chair says, is that they don't waive it, and we go to a town meeting in November. A third option, which Town Council has outlined as well in a follow-up letter that he wrote to, to Attorney Gould, was the idea that during the vetting process, during the public hearing process, that we're, that we'd be embarking on, if there were certain agreeable amendments that could be made to the plan, that would, that would cause the selectmen to be able to say, well, we'll give you a right of first refusal, but only if you do this, that, or the other thing. Issues that would have come out during the vetting process. Then Council says we'd have the ability to, to enter into a host community agreement between the Board of Selectmen and the, the buyer and the, or the seller, where the board would waive its right, but only if certain, the certain conditions the selectmen are looking for is not. That option gives some opportunity for it just to be, and rather than just be a yes-no, up or down decision on the proposal on the table, would allow for some thoughtful consideration of, of amendments to the, to the proposal. So if we, and so we're, what we're bringing back is the recommendation to commit to that vetting process, have a public hearing on the matter, and, and as the framework for us to get input from the community that we know the community is just a person that seems to give us. So we want to set up a process where they can do that.
Sure. Board members, questions, comments?
Not specific, so this piece of property.
All right. Sheri, you, you have any comment? Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public member have any comment? All right. So, I would look for a motion.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to schedule a public hearing from Monday, July 13th, 2015, at 7:30 PM, on the seller's request to waive the town's right of first refusal under Mass General Law Chapter 61A for the 32, sorry, 34.23 acre Cooper Farm property located at 180 Great Road.
Mr. Chair, just point of order, that request of the seller is not before you yet.
Okay.
So it hasn't made a formal request to ask you to waive it.
All right, so--
So we'll put off holding the public hearing.
Okay.
Is that what you're saying? You don't want us to go forward with public hearing?
The request could come in in time for the 13th, but the way the motion was worded, made it sound as if the request was already before the month's end.
Then I'd say we should withdraw the motion. There's kind of, yeah, we don't need to take any action tonight.
All right, so we'll wait for that, we'll wait for that request to come in, and then hopefully by June 22nd, we can--
We can put this back on our agenda two weeks from now, but if this motion is premature--
What's the, what's the date that you'd be the request in to be on the meeting for the 13th? The date by which we--
Well, well, we meet two weeks from tonight, and the, we would need to request in by the Thursday prior to that. So--
It would be about the 2019th? Eight, somewhere around there?
That's fine.
Yeah, but, okay. I'm just concerned that when we left the room last Tuesday, we had a common understanding, which now has changed, and I just don't understand why that happened.
You do have a ticking clock, too.
No, we don't. The clock is not ticking.
Right of first refusal, doesn't make sense.
No, the clock is not ticking, that was the other point to, to be made, that the notice that was received is defective under the statute, and the clock is not ticking. And so therefore, we've, we, what we wanted to do, without being under the gun to have to have a town meeting by Labor Day, if the clock were ticking, what we wanted to do was to figure out what is an agreeable timetable for us to do. And to be able to bring a matter to a November town meeting would be agreeable. Bringing one to, one held before Labor Day would not be--
And to Mr. Bergman through the chair, I'm not disagreeing with you as to how we left that meeting. I've been away since that meeting.
Yeah.
The seller's financial representatives have been away since that meeting, and we haven't had a chance to formally present a request for that waiver.
Okay.
So, I just thought it was not proper to say that you're scheduling on our request for a waiver, when no request was made, I need to make it formally.
We will await that--
Thank you.
Action.
One more question. The only question I have, Keith, is how, how far in advance do we have to advertise a public hearing?
If, we will be advertising for two weeks shorter than we were planning, but we could, we would get a notice in, there, there's no statutory requirement for a public hearing. If we voted on the 22nd of, it would be the following--
So 22nd of June, if you, next to 13?
No, no, because it's that Friday. June 20, I'm calling up the calendar now.
8, 14, 22.
I'm in the motion state.
July 2nd will be when the ad appears.
We're not going to amend the motion, she, she said she doesn't have a question for, so we don't have to do it.
Mr. Chair, responding to what Mr. Decus started to say, I think he's suggesting we amend the motion to schedule it in anticipation of receiving the request for waiver, which I anticipate you'll receive, I just don't have it--
Okay, well, why don't we add the word forthcoming?
Perfect.
Thank you. And then we'll take our vote in then. Because I would very much like to give the town people as, as much advanced notice of this as possible. So a forthcoming request is what the notice will say.
That's great.
Thank you.
Can you unshut that?
Yes, you can. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to schedule a public hearing from Monday, July 13th, 2015, at 7:30 PM, on the forthcoming seller's request to waive the town's right of first refusal under Mass General Law Chapter 61A for the 34.23 acre Cooper Farm property located at 180 Great Road.
Second.
It's been moved to second, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Hell again, solution.
You guys just let me talk, I'm not gonna-- I wouldn't have said forthcoming.
That was the word, that was the word we needed, forthcoming.
There's just a piece of this, and Sheri doesn't need to stay for it, that's, that's intriguing for the entire entranceway, so to speak, on Route 2A, 119, coming into town. And that's the set aside, as the proposal is put for us, at this point at least, see if it remains in it. But 9A is a frontage along Great Road for open space, that this particular buyer was going to put into this, to sweeten the deal, so to speak. But then, that opens the subject of the entire road, for the most part, from about Shakealane up into town, as to development rights. And certainly not something to be discussed this evening, other than ask that we look at, maybe sometimes at the end of the summer, is getting a little bit smarter on that, and how we may approach landowners, realizing it's private property, but something that through various mechanisms and different negotiations could result in the preservation of some frontage along that road that serves the purpose of the town and landowner.
There was very healthy discussion about that during our overlay district. Yeah, yeah, but it's absolutely, we can rekindle that fire, just to re-educate everybody on that.
Absolutely.
All right, last but not least, 9C, Nagog Hill lease, we, this is for the orchard, and the lease is expiring. I was on a committee that was to bid not only that property, but Church Meadows, I believe, and some other property for use in agricultural purposes. We met once or twice, and we, we just did not get back to it. So unfortunately, this, this document, the bid document for the orchard has not gone out. I, I did speak with the current occupant, Leasy, about this extension, and again, he's concerned about the investment that he puts into the property for only one year, you know? It's tough for him to really spend that amount of money on a one-year lease, and he really is, you know, looking forward to a document to get out, so he can bid on running the property with a multi-year lease. He also mentioned that the town of Westford has an orchard approached him also, with a minimum of a three-year lease. So he's waiting to see what, where this town is going to do for this procurement. And I, I know I left you a message, Bonnie, about this. I'm going to kind of take lead on this, I will, the chair is Jamie Cruz for that committee. I've reached out to her to really fast-track this. Let's get a document. This is nothing that hasn't been done before. I've done it my real job, using documents for the State Agricultural Commission, that has helped me out. We also have a resource in Mr. Mitchell that can help us open this document. So, we really need to get going on this. This is just another year extension, and buying us a year.
Is he agreeable to one year?
Charles has agreed to another year extension, so, which is good for the town.
And that year would be needed to, we'd need a year--
At least, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So, we need to, we need to, and I, you know, I will take the full brunt of it, because I should have got this done, so. Comments, questions, board, board members?
Not just you, we had a whole committee.
Yeah, I know, I know. I'll take it, I'll take it. Hearing done, I'd look for a motion.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to execute a further extension from July 1st, 2015, to July 1st, 2016, of the June 22nd, 2000 lease agreement with Nagog Frueters, Inc., for the Morrison Nagog Hill Orchard property on the same terms and conditions as the lease as extended.
Second.
I move the second and all those in favor. All right. So Mr. Knox is not here, he's out in California visiting his son, and--
We received an email from him earlier.
Yes, we did.
Did you see it? During the meeting?
No.
It was the, a question that had been, had come out maybe before we started, where--
Was he watching us on TV out there?
Yeah, yeah, the request was when, that Chuck had asked, when would Great Road be striped? And Joe wrote back to Jim Clyde, get Chuck a paintbrush and a can of paint.
Mr. Knox, Regent Williams from California.
Low VOC.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Finley.
Mr. Finley, I want to make a warning here, there are two assets that are connected to the lease of the orchard that are being squandered at the moment. One of them is something I've been trying to work on for a couple of years with the Concord Water Supply Department, which is basically cleaning up the view as you come down Nagog Hill Road. For some reason, there was some agreement that they would stop taking care of that, and I've emailed Keith some pictures showing the deterioration over the last--
Which they all have.
Which you, you probably saw, the, well--
That's okay, I got an email--
It's in your inbox.
Well, yeah, this, this was on the cover of our 2003 Open Space Recreation Plan, and it's one of, it's arguably the most scenic view in all of Littleton. And unfortunately, it's been deteriorating for a long time, I've been trying to work on getting it, deterioration stopped for a couple of years, and Concord, finally, at the end of last year, they said, okay, go ahead, you know, proceed, so they're fine with it. And I've talked to Charles about it also.
When you say deterioration, just growing up, just--
Seriously.
Going back to a natural state of growing, right?
It's, I mean, you'll see some, I was in there the other day, and I was going through poison ivy--
I got you, I got you, but when you say deterioration, it sounds negative. It's just a matter of-- It's just a matter of being, going back to its natural state of growing, so. I just don't want people in the audience to think that we have, you know, oil tankers backing into it and all that.
But it is invasive plants, and you have 100 acres of conservation across the way.
Sure, I get it.
It's just all spreading that way.
Yeah.
That was the one thing, and I can work on that in terms of getting it cleaned up the best.
Yep.
All right, with you guys, and so I think it's all right with Charles talking about it. The other is, there is a studio, it's been a studio historically, that faces that view, and it's no longer being used, and we have, are you familiar with Belchow's property on Fort Palm?
No.
No. Anyway, it's, she's had a studio there, and they're trying to create some sort of an entity in perpetuity, hopefully, they would activate that as an artist studio.
What are you talking about, an actual structure?
There is an actual structure.
Then someone would have to run to Town Council as regards to, you know, liabilities and all that stuff, too, but--
Sure, absolutely, and they'd probably be renting it so that we're upkeep, just keep it going.
Sure. So, I mean, you know, that, I know the vista, you're talking about that view, because I've had discussions with Charles about it also, and, you know, that's Concord Water Supply, and it's a very, they're very touchy--
I know they are.
--when it comes to their, to their water supply, so I understand their concerns, too, but if you got there okay, I don't, and, you know, the Leasee is okay with it, you having access to that, I don't, I don't personally have a problem. Board members, any issues?
No, I would think anything, if it's on the property they're releasing, it has to be included in the lease.
Yes.
Provisions for it, you know, so that's certainly something that you volunteered to work out, so thank you.
I will, I will.
But I do have a general knowledge question, you began to hit on it. What are the general rules of access to the water?
You don't--
There isn't going to the water. However, there is a wonderful spot for a picnic table 100 yards away with all the views.
You don't want people going to the water, or people are prohibited from going to the water, which is it?
I think, according to a sign that's down there--
Prohibited.
Okay, thanks.
In reality, it's somewhere in between.
Yeah.
It's an active water supply, they take minimal amount to keep it active and keep it on their own.
Right.
So--
There's a discussion that's been ongoing for a couple of years.
You know, what's happened is it's over, it's grown up, and now everybody goes in there and--
It's interesting that, and my question was specific, access to the fluid, the liquid, not the plants that are growing. And it seems there's multiple answers, perhaps.
It's prohibited. That's, that's the easy answer, it's prohibited.
I'm interested in restoring the view, basically, and making it accessible to Littleton people, as a picnic table, perhaps. This parking that's associated with the studios--
So the studios piece, Rich, Rick, if you, if you get a proposal into the town administrator, because we're going to be very active on this RFP, so the sooner the better. All right? Thank you.
So we're done, aren't we? Just had one last bit about New York State Road Markings.
Uh, New York State Road Markings, go ahead.
So where are we on that, do we know? Is that happening, John?
This week.
Thank you.
Okay.
Every, every property.
Okay, fantastic.
Motion, John?
Second.
Move the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Did I forget a motion? Oh, yeah, that one.
Okay.